Interesting things.
Um, I couldn't really tell what people could see in the room projected. I just know I could see some of you guys.
We were seeing the presentation, but not, not like with Zoom around.
I see.
Good morning, everyone. It is, uh, Friday, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Carney County Court is in session. Our, our Zoom is working. Our projector in here is not working, so it'll get recorded. It's just not gonna cast up on the wall this morning, so. A little bit of technical difficulties there getting started, but if everybody will stand, then please join me for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item, um, we took care of vouchers. Accounts payable stuff already, uh, late items. Any late items for the, excuse me, the agenda?
No.
No, sir.
Uh, agenda approval.
I move to approve today's Carney County Court meeting agenda.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve Carney County, the twenty twenty-five, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-five Carney County agenda. Any further discussion? All favor signified by saying aye.
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 And opposed, hearing none, motion carried. Uh, next item is minutes approval from September third, regular county court session.
I move to approve the Carney County Court meeting minutes from September third, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
A motion been made and seconded to approve the Carney County Court minutes from September third, twenty twenty-five, regular session. Any further discussion?
I did have a question on those. Just for clarification, when we talked about the modernization recycling stuff, and because our communities are less than four thousand, it falls on the county, but could, is there some caveat? Because when you take out the municipalities, there are less than four thousand people left over, you know what I mean? Is there a way to get around that? Has that been explored?
It has been explored to the fullest. Um, I've had county council look at it. We've had a couple of different meetings on it with DEQ. Um, they say that because we have, that we have, because we have county landfills, that we have to participate in, um, the Modernization and Recycling Act requirements. But then my question goes back to them. Well, the cities of Burns and Hines have a franchise for landfill. And I mean, we're not under four thou-, or we're not over four thousand, they're not over four thousand, so why, why do we have to comply? And provide that service for everybody in the county, but yet the cities do not. And I really can't get a clear and concise um, answer out of them, other than the fact that we, they're saying we have to.
Their reasoning was that we have all the land, the county owns the landfills and Riley and all the other places, and so you have to, if you're gonna have a landfill, have an option to recycle. But because they're so rural, they're letting us hold it in a more convenient location, which is rimrock.
But in the end, we end up providing it for the entire county. And having to expand as such to accommodate the entire county, both Burns and Hines. So I, I have explored that as much as I can, because I agree, I don't think that it, why does it fall solely on the county's shoulders? Um, and that's all we've got.
May I suggest that, um, if you two go to the AOC District Two meeting, that when they're just asking anything that's on anyone's mind, you might wanna bring that up and see if any of the other counties are that, that are at that meeting or, or in a similar situation.
Okay. Good. With that said, then, any other comments on minutes? All favor sign, uh, all where it's been made and seconded, uh, any further discussion? We've had that. All favor signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Got me off my track there.
Sorry.
Uh, let me see, opportunity for public comment. Yes, ma'am. Your name, please, Ann.
Oh, Barbara Kennedy, um, first time's here, I guess we can put it down for that one this time. Anyway, I have two questions. One of whom, we've just lost another service over in Paros, a village, we no longer have a dentist there. And, uh, so I was in contact with Matt Bauer, who was our remaining dentist, uh, service. And, uh, we have a problem in that we don't have a dentist that services Medicaid patients. Okay, so, um, Matt had said he would give me a report in the next couple of weeks of where they're at on getting another dentist here. Um, but one of the problems, and this doesn't come from that, but one of the problems is that I think the program has been shifted that used to allow medical professionals to, uh, get some deductions off of their student loans if they came, if they serve rural areas. And evidently, that program is no longer in effect. So I was wondering if the, um, through Economic Development Board or whatever, uh, if there was some way that the county could support um, bringing that program back. Cause otherwise, it's just gonna get harder and harder for medical staff.
I ha- I have a little bit on that. I, I am on the local community health partnership. And that is a topic that is raised there, um, because that group focuses on the Oregon Health Plan Medicaid population. And that, it's a big problem, because now those patients need, have to travel farther, uh, and um, the state is aware of it. GOBE, Greater Oregon Behavioral Health, which is involved in this, is aware of it. But it is really hard to entice, like you say, dentists to move here, cause a lot of them don't wanna move here. They, they've got other plans. And so I will, um, I'll look into this a little bit, and I will raise this at the next meeting for them to see if they can take some action on that, identify the legislation that may be involved, or if there is legislation or programs, and I'll also inquire through, um, Association of Oregon Counties and try to find out more. Um, if, if forgiving some dental student loans used to be enough incentive to at least get some additional dentists here, even if they're not highly experienced, um. And if that would continue to bring them in, and then a, a more seasoned dentist to help oversee them, I mean, I don't know what the answer is, except that um, it's a darn shame, because dental health affects regular metal, medical health and everything else.
I don't think it's just dentists. I, I don't know, maybe.
I, I don't, if you find out more, will you let me know if you find out specifically more what that program is? Or was, and I'll also get to that, try to find out more.
Um, so, and, and on, to, to clarify too, in your, in your comment or your question, you said Medicaid, so are you specifically referring to Medicaid or Medicare?
Medicaid.
Medicaid.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and a lot of the reason, um, the Burnstall, who had done it for forty years, you know, their, their practice became overwhelmed with the, uh, the reduction of benefits and fees and, and timeliness of payments and things like that, to where it impacted their own practice, and they, they eventually sadly, had to give it up, their normal patients that, payments that would come in a timely fashion and do other things, kept getting pushed out and pushed out to where they, they weren't even seen on a regular basis, and they went elsewhere also. So it was one of those things, it was a darn shame. They hated to do it, but they, they felt they had to do it.
I had worked with Dr. Bauer last year, um, towards the end of last year, and worked on an article where they were going to try to get another dentist here specifically to work with Medicaid, um, patients. And, um, they're evidently, they're working with a firm, it's kind of a, I'm reading between the lines, uh, from the emails we've sent back and forth. And so he said, you should have a report towards, towards the end of the month, it should be in the next couple of weeks. So I didn't wanna write anything about it until, you know, he had, um, his confirmation, one way or the other, of what was going on in the process, but he had intended to have somebody onboard by the first of the year, and obviously, that hasn't happened, and he's very frustrated with that. So, um, anyway, it's just gonna be an ongoing process, and hopefully, get something, especially because now that the other dentist is back, today is his last day of Boonham County. And his moving van was out from last Monday, and so, um.
I, I know that what, um, some of the services are that try to help that population with this situation is the transportation element. Um, they, through the Oregon Health Plan and, and stuff, they're, uh, they try to provide either the funding or the actual transportation, but as you can imagine, that's in whether they're going to Ontario or Bend or to John Day or wherever they can go, but it, it gets pretty complicated. Um, I have some old emails between Dr. Bauer and myself from some years back, before uh, the state of Oregon changed something, OH eight, that, you know, basically put the nail in the coffin, um, so it'll have some background for you.
Hmm, okay. Um, so my second question revolves around this petition that she sent. Um, it's over a hundred pages. I just got a copy of it, and I haven't gotten to read the whole thing. But, um, on the surface of what I read in the paper, it's all well and good, and everybody's equal and, and all of that, but in the hundred pages, and I'm kind of aware of a number of things that are going on with the refuge and whatnot. And, uh, so I was wondering, was there anything in the hundred pages plus that, um, talked about maybe changing the status of Mount Her Lake or, um, anything like that?
What do you mean by changing the status of Mount Her Lake?
Well, um, and I, there's only so much I can talk about. Okay, so.
You mean changing it from a lacustrine to a wetland, like it really is? Is that what you're referring to?
To change it to a wetland rather than a lake, and, uh, also other things that the tribes weren't working on with the refuge. Um, I, you know, I, I can't discuss everything because it's not my place. Okay, so, um, but, um, yeah, there's, there's changes afoot, and, um, I just wondered if any of it came out in this hundred pages, or if it's all just very general and rural and all worked together.
Well, it, it had some specific changes from the original proposed rules. Um, as far as curtail, curtailment, voluntary agreements. Um, uh, the municipalities were exempted from it, so those cuts that they had proposed in the five twelve rules wouldn't affect the municipalities. Um, I, I think it goes a lot, and if you were in attendance to what the public comments were, um, at the community center, a lot of it reflects a lot of what people spoke about at that night.
That's a pretty good analysis, and that's a agenda, and we'll talk more about it then, and I don't know wanna entertain public comment then, but that might answer some of your questions, but it doesn't go into the, the refuge, its designation of the lake at all.
Hmm. I was looking at the surprise, uh, the signatures, I was, I was surprised at a number of them and, and found it very interesting, but I haven't got it all pieced together yet. Um.
So the, the, the group there was primary, was a group of primary petitioners, and there is lists, uh, for others to sign as, uh, pro, uh, petitioners, uh, that the public can come and sign as well.
Yeah, the public that I, signatures that I saw, I just wondered how many of them had actually read it before this, signed the petition.
Well, that's always a challenge for anything.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, when is the last date for people to sign it?
I wanna say it was December sometime, wasn't it? I'll have to double check, but it had quite a bit of time, there was quite a bit of time for people to be able to review and.
And if people wanna come in and sign it, where, where's, where can they, what's.
They were, I, I had asked at that meeting that day to be sent some sheets. I haven't seen them yet, not followed up on it.
I guess it's a concern that so many things are changing after the RAC committee meetings. I, I don't understand that, of why a lot of this stuff didn't come forward when the RAC was meeting. And so we've had the RAC meetings conclude, we've had all this public comment, and then, I know, like Water Watch has made a lot of changes that didn't really come before the RAC. And I find that concerning, and so then all these other attempts to change things uh, I just really think should have been discussed publicly rather than going around the back door.
Uh, during that, during that signing, uh, Representative Owens did make comment that the commission was surprised at the original, or the initial, um, uh, response by the community and, and members of Carney County, which kind of, I'm like, did they think that we were just going to sit back, allow them to push through their proposed rules and not say anything about it? Um, so it, 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 I, I find it troubling that they were caught off guard by the amount of, uh,
Response.
Response.
You know, our, our community, the people of our community are generally courteous, humble people who are, who don't just interrupt and grandstand at, at meetings, whether they're formal procedural meetings or not. And, uh, so I, I like some, some places where you just public, just, you know, rants right there in the meetings. Our, our community doesn't do that. Our community is polite and courteous in general, and, um, so if, if a lot of these comments may have seemed like they came at the end to the commission, I would just say people try to use the time, the proper time to make their comments. So I don't think they should have been surprised.
Well, I don't think they should have been surprised when, when we've undergone how many years? Four, five years?
Ten.
Ten years of community-based water planning? And, and they were about to push these rules through before that process was even done, and then propose any proposals from it? Um, so if they'd have been listening all along, they wouldn't have been surprised at the, at the response at that time. They would have been listening to all the comments and everything that was said during that ten-year period. They wouldn't have been caught off guard.
But they were changing things as they were going around the communities for the last comments. We'd have different changes, and, you know, and I mentioned Water Watch because that was mentioned as one of the direction that this extras were coming from. And I just find it, uh, curious that, um, that you have an end of comment period, or this is the conclusion before we make a decision, or, you know, internal discussion, anything? And then it just keeps going. I don't, I don't understand why, especially when, in that particular case, that person was at the table and very, very involved in all the different processes that went on.
All right, um, any other public comment? Not seeing any, we'll move along to, uh, organizational updates, and we have Karen Moon from Watershed Council provide a update. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Um, as, as you know, uh, Watershed Councils were started in the late nineties by former Governor Kestopper. Um, one of, and I will just keep repeating this every time I come, one of the reasons that I'm here giving you an update is that when Watershed Councils were started, um, and it is listed in state statute, that they need to be recognized by the local N Z T, uh, government, the city, you know, whatever, and the Carney County Court was the entity that recognized the Watershed Council when we were formed. And so part of that, there is a requirement in statute that I come and tell you every year. And as, you know, public comment or whatever, one of the main focus of Watershed Council for the past ten years has been water. Um, and just with the previous conversation, I guess I'm still I'm a little frustrated that, that there's still confusion between the different processes that went on. Um, but anyway, I'm gonna start with my presentation first. Um, community-based water planning has been a major project for the council for the past ten years. Um, water, water planning is part of the state's place-based planning, which is part of the integrated water resources strategy that was developed in the state in two thousand and twelve. And what came out of that, and it took a number of years to be implemented, is part of that integrated water resources strategy is to engage with communities to help solve their own water problems. And so, uh, so we've been a part of that. Um, I guess what I keep trying to explain is that community-based water planning or place-based planning is a completely separate process from the rules. Um, but I, I think that over the years, um, because our place-based planning projects started at the same time that the area of concern was designated. It's been confusion about the two and how they interact and how they, whatever, um. I think that place-based planning in its through its process did inform the RAC. Um, but it is not the, it is not the purpose of place-based planning to fix groundwater problems. It is a plan to, uh, place-based planning is for both in-stream, out-of-stream, groundwater, surface water, ecological services that are needed, and I think that's what our plan does. We chose, because of the area of concern designation, we chose to separate surface water and groundwater, and we focused on groundwater for a good many years before. Um, and so, five, five steps of place-based planning are to create a collaborative, which we did. Um, step two is to identify current conditions in the basin. Step three is to identify future needs. Um, four is working on strategies, which for the groundwater portion, when we started, we had ninety-six, um, given by the group, ninety-six proposed strategies that were synthesized down into thirty, um, thirty-some. Um, and then starting two year, two years, two and a half years ago, with the completion of our groundwater portion of the plan, we switched to surface water. We went through the same steps, steps two and three. Um, through that entire process, um, beginning to to deal with current, you know, identify current conditions, there were members from this community that actually wrote all of the chapters in the book. Um, there were work groups for ecological needs, um. Ah, and.
Which book are you applying to?
Um, I have them for you, potentially. It's the groundwater portion of the community-based water plan. Um, and also for surface water. There were work groups, um, some were, were dealing with agricultural needs, both for surface water and for groundwater. There was, uh, ecological needs, and then there was, uh, vegetation, uh, vegetation working group. And, um, anyway, so this plan, we feel like, and, and we presented to the commission last week at their meeting, um, our final integrated plan. Um, which they, they asked, you know, the, the purpose of place-based planning was to develop an integrated plan, so we did the two separate plans. And then our integrated plan is actually more like an executive summary of both plans, identifying all of the strategies and talking about how to move, you know, our, our plans to move forward in the implementation. Um, anyway, so that, that has been a major focus of our work for the last ten years, and, and actually, right now with and I will have to say, I am going to, um, for placement or for, you know, place water planning, um, we have one more meeting to do, and it is next week, Thursday, and it is a celebration of the state recognizing our plan. I hope that as partners and conveners of the process, that the county, that you received the email with the invitation to come. Please, R S P P. Um, anyway, I, I hope for next week, I wanna go back through all of the years and, um, count all of the meetings that have taken place over the last ten years. When we started, we would have six-hour meetings, the coll- the full collaborative would meet quarterly, and all four of the work groups would meet monthly. Um, over the years, it switched to the collaborative for probably four or five years, has been that monthly. And so there has been a lot of work. I hope that people will give it credibility and recognize that while it may not have been huge numbers of the community, we, we've had a lot of people come and go through the process. We've had a smaller number of people who have been dedicated enough to stick with it through the whole process, so. But I think it is representative of a community plan. Um, I hear a lot of comments recently that they don't feel like the Rules Committee, um, took things into account, um. But I think they did as hard as they could, um, because like I said at the beginning, the rules process is a totally separate process from place-based planning. And a couple of things that I could point out, um, that place-based planning did, and they have contributed mostly to the groundwater project, as then we, when we started, the meat saw that there was a need for a ground, for a RAC program. For Carney, for, for groundwater, and groundwater crap has never been done before, but through about three years worth of work, while the groundwater stage was going on, um, a RAC proposal was proposed. It was passed through the Oregon Legislature and approved through the federal. So we have a RAC program that could, um, help people receive payments in order to retire their water rights for up to twenty thousand acres. At the beginning of the process, the court and the Watershed Council contributed some to Anderson Perry doing a feasibility study for providing alternate, alternatives, um, water services for water delivery for people experiencing problems. Um, T N C, uh, through an O W E B grant, um, and partnering with the collaborative, um, did a feasibility study to learn, to explore and learn about water markets or water shares. Um, and that included voluntary agreements. So that was a contributing factor to the rules. Uh, we had numerous, uh, we encouraged people to, to help, uh, with rebate programs for irrigation efficiencies through NRCS and Carney Electric. Um, the Watershed Council received a grant from O W E B to conduct a survey of domestic well users at the beginning of the groundwater phase, and it was a very, considered a very successful phase. If I remember the coordinate or the um, percentages, I think we had fifty-four percent uh, response from our survey. We sent out, I believe, twelve or thirteen hundred surveys to well owners within the county. Um, we had, there's NRCS programs to implement efficiencies. Um, the Watershed Council received a grant to participate with the NASA Roses Project to develop Open E T. And one of the case studies that they used to calibrate Open E T was, was right here in Carney County. Um.
I'm sorry, Karen, before, can we go back a little bit? Cause, um, when you talked about the O W E B grant to conduct the survey of domestic well users, could you talk a little bit more about that? And do you have some information you can share? And the only reason I ask is because we recently had a conversation with the O W E B Director about the possibility of them utilizing their land and water acquisition funds to buy back some of these over-appropriated water rights? And they came back and said that they, they just can't fi- find a way to make that fit, but it seems to me like if they can do grant money to survey domestic wells, then they definitely, you know, then groundwater falls under their purview, and so I'd be curious to know more about that program.
Um, at that time, they were offering a grant called, um, Outreach and Education. Um, that category is no longer available. Um, they do have community engagement grants. Um, but you know, we, uh, members of the domestic well group within water planning felt it was important to reach out to people. Uh, one of the things that came from that is that we realized people don't know a lot of information about their wells. They don't know how deep their well is. They don't know, you know, until they experience a failure, they don't know that, they don't think about there being a problem. Um, and so part of, and I can share, I can share the results, both summary page and the survey. We had a group from the domestic well group that came together and worked with, it was. it was a OSU department that was specializing in surveys at the time. And quite a lot of work went into the survey questions. So, and we were very pleased with the response that we got.
Karen, um, as part of the mission, the Hardy County Watershed Council works to improve watershed health for the benefit of our communities and the environment. Can the watershed council help solve some of our water issues locally related to flooding? I.e. drainage, infrastructure stuff, because our local, um, the cities and the county, you know, really don't have funds. And we need to, you know, we need to work on, on some of this stuff soon. And I just didn't know if they have some type of, if it fall, if it can fall under your mission, maybe we need to look for you for some ideas.
Um, I think we, I think there's a way we could. Most of the funders that the watershed council engages with, though, we have to prove an econo- uh, ecological benefit. Which we can find ways to do.
Yeah, because then the sewer systems won't flood the water. No, I mean, I bet some good minds could think on that and, and probably find other things as well.
Where there's other funders.
Yeah, uh, I would ask for you to start thinking about that for us, to help us, okay? Because we need help on that. Thank you.
Okay. But I will get back to watershed council and sort of just place-based, place-based planning. The watershed council has, through the years, um, helped facilitate at least two agrument stations within the basin, which help irrigators in the weather and ET. There is one out, uh, in the field in Crane at Margones Farm. And there is also an ET station out at the Eastern Oregon Agricultural Research Center, um, which was put there to help, uh, irrigators who use flood irrigation uh, for that. I still have Open ET in here, I guess. Maybe at some point I should remove that from my flyer. And the, the, um, Open ET program though is a program, it's a platform that was developed that uses, um, it's basically another weather station, although when the project was going on, the, um, eddycovarian station, while agrarymatically reports to, um, Bureau of Rec, you know, the program that does once a day, the eddycovarian stations were reporting every fifteen minutes for as long as the study continued. It was nice, and I think it was a way to validate the agrument stations as well as that we had both the eddycovarian station and the agrument station at Owens Hey, sitting right next to each other. Um, so that was very helpful. And local ranchers can log on to or join, I'm not sure if there's a fee or not, but they can log on to Open ET. Um, they can narrow down right to their personal property and find out what their evaporate transpiration rates are and, and learn more about their water needs. Is it hot enough today that I need to put more water on? Is it cool enough? I don't, maybe don't need to run the pivot for a day or two. There's a bit of a learning curve to it, but it is available. So, uh, the watershed council participates, has been a partner for many years in the Hardy Basin Wetlands Collaborative. Uh, most of the work that we have helped to do is with irrigation infrastructure, um, improvements. And along that lines, one of our current problems, or one of our current projects, this kind of gets to be a problem, is, uh, working to help irrigators replace the Five Mile Dam and upgrade it. It is a big project. It's complicated. It'll be a few more years, but hopefully we can.
Who owns the dam?
That was a question for many, many.
I thought it was.
For many years, yes. Um, we've come to find out that the dam was built somewhere between nineteen twenty-five and nineteen twenty-seven. Um, Water Resources considers the water users from that diversion to be responsible for it. And at this point, um, we still have a little bit of question because land ownership on the east side of the dam is BLM. On the left, on the west side is private. Um, and what's kind of pushed things back just a little bit is that BLM is looking into having a survey done um, to know exactly where the land ownership boundaries are, to see if BLM is, is maybe responsible for more of the dam. That opened things up to probably the NIVA process in replacement, I mean, that may cause some delays. But we're working through that, and we will, we will keep moving forward. I have talked with the landowners on the west side, and they are open, open to the project. You know, we're looking for funding. We thought we had pretty much all funding in place until, um, HDP, the, our CPP that they were awarded a year ago was rescinded. You know, for the, the way things are, uh, recently. But I think that working, working with Ducks Unlimited as the, um, the, the, and their engineers, we're still moving forward. We have possibilities, so we'll keep that going. We had two projects that were completed through some of the funding that we had for community-based water planning. Um, I believe you people worked with Kleinschmidt for your flood model and whatever. So the watershed council received money to contract with Kleinschmidt to do a model run for a high-water year, a low-water year, and a median-water year on the Sobeys River from Five Mile Dam down to the lake. And that was completed. I can't tell you exactly what the results of it were, but it's information that could be useful for irrigators. We also had a project to, um, explore, beaver occupancy, habitat, quality, water storage, and carbon, carbon storage for beaver. The collaborative felt that helping to keep water in the uplands longer may help with stream flows throughout the summer. And one of the, one of the topics that's kind of been the new thing lately is restoring beaver, which, and, and we worked with Professor Fairfax, who was from the University of Minnesota. They do everything by satellite images or whatever, and she gave us her report a couple months ago. It was interesting, the, the beaver dams that they've identified, they identified where you could possibly promote expansion of beaver. Of course, that all depends on if private landowners are open to that or not. Um, but there is the possibility. See where that goes with, one of our other favorite projects at the watershed council is Range Camp. We worked with the Eastern Oregon Agricultural Research Center, started out probably twelve or thirteen years ago with both a high school camp and a college camp. And, uh, as things have gone and after COVID or whatever, the high school camp has never really taken off again. But we do continue to do a college range camp, uh, usually in April. During the year, it's where, uh, natural resource, range, you know, majors. Uh, we usually have seven or eight colleges from California, Nevada, Oregon, Idaho, um, that come and spend three days with the scientists out at the research center. Um, the focus for a number of years has been, um, sage fresh, or sage trouse habitat and the, you know, developing a conservation plan for different land, you know, for lands to, uh, uh, to keep ranching and grazing and, you know, activities going on for our rural community. Um, so that if sage trouses were listed, they can continue to use their, their allotments and their properties for grazing. Um, this last year, they changed up the program a little bit to, um, focus a little more on fire rehab, fire rehab, or, or planning for, um, hoping to prevent wildfire. Um, the camp is very popular. Um, at one point in time, I think we had, uh, we had fifty students that wanted to attend, and that actually got to be a little, a little much for the facilities out there. So, uh, we focus on between thirty-five and forty students coming for the three days. Uh, members of the watershed council volunteer to go out and cook. Do, we usually find some sponsors to help with, with costs. Uh, most of the costs are, are food, so. For kids, but we have always, uh, felt that the Hardy County way in promoting beef is the way to go. And so, we do actually have a local ranger that usually donates all the beef for the entire camp. And that is one of our favorite things. Um, one other thing that for the community, OWEB has a small grant program. It's been going on for many years. I have been the coordinator for the team for probably the last ten years or so. And I just received the email last night that our, um, small, our small grant program, uh, grant agreement is ready to go, so I will sign that later today and we'll get, get the team back together. The nice thing about the small grant program is that we have a local review team. Um, this team usually chooses to meet monthly. And in the past, it's been Soil and Water Conservation District, the Burns Paiute Tribe, and the Watershed Council were the three entities that could submit applications to this program. Um, and this year, this biennium, they are changing that. So, uh, any entity that could apply to OWEB for a grant is eligible to apply. Small grants are, um, normally in the fifteen to twenty thousand dollar range. Um, there is a list that the team will go through, um, that identifies priorities, which is normally like uplands, wetlands, um, riparian conditions or whatever, um, the team will have to go through and, and reorganize what they feel their priorities are. Most of the work that we've done here is in the uplands category, um, implementing solar watering projects for upstream water and for grazing distribution.
What are some examples of what people have used those grants for in the past?
Mostly solar pumps. There has been, I'm just trying to think. There's been some, there'd be solar pumps or piping projects, um. There has been uh, development of quite a few years ago of the, um, upstream water, uh, the movable ones with the submersible pumps that come with a trailer. Oh gosh, now that you ask me, that's like the only thing that's sticking in my head.
Couple of questions, um, who, so who's the point of contact for the crap program?
Um, Graham, oh my gosh, now I lost his last name.
What organization?
Graham Thomas with Water Resources Department.
Oh, okay. And, uh.
And I believe that the SWCD just hired, a person that will, I think it'll be a joint employee between NRCS and SWCD. This will be the technical person that goes out to work with the landowner to develop
Okay.
the plan, because there will be, like a normal crap program, they, they won't have to, they'll give up their water rights, but they'll have so many years to establish cover crop from where the agricultural crop was. Um, and so they need a, don't need a local NRCS person to go out and work with them.
And, and then I'm just looking at, at, you know, your document and on the topic of remote sensing estimate of the beaver occupancy, the remote sensing for carbon storage in the Hardy Basin, I mean, that we're basically just talking about uh, an overhead view of the vegetation, the trees and stuff. Okay, is there anything else to that?
I would have to go back and read through.
I'm just asking to increase my knowledge, not.
It was odd to me how the carbon fit into the whole project, um, but I think it's carbon storage through.
Plants and trees.
And holding water higher up in the uplands so that it releases later in the,
Thank you.
in the season.
Thank you.
But I'm trying to think of when, of her presentation. I'm, I am, uh, working with Professor Fairfax to hopefully give a, uh, another presentation to the Wetlands Collaborative on her results, so.
I'd like to, uh, invite you and, and members of the watershed council, if they, if you guys ever want to come beyond the agenda as more of a group where they can each share something they want us to know, um, anytime.
Okay. Good idea.
I, I, I'd spoken with Karen recently and, and said, with all of the, um, involvement and interest of our people across all the sub-basin areas on the Division Five Twelve comments and stuff, we've got a lot of community members who are very engaged and knowledgeable now on, on that, that aspect of watershed and, um, that this might be a good time should she need to recruit any people for her board to try to get some of these people involved.
I do have some things, okay.
Will you, would you mind emailing us any information? Even if it's just a link, it does not have to be all the information about those, the OWEB grant work that we did, but even if it's just the one sheet or the results of that, and also that hydrologic model or the hydraulic model
Yes.
that you referenced, because we do have some partners who are trying to work with us for flood mitigation projects, but their, their concern is that we can also show an ecological benefit for their group, and I think, I, I don't think I've seen that model, but I think that would be very helpful.
Probably haven't, so I have, I have been horrible about sharing.
You have it?
Sharing that out. You don't have it?
Yeah, you would email that to us.
What was the timeframe of it when it happened?
The hydrologic model was twenty-three into twenty-four.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
I mean, you're after our work.
Um, yes, I'm happy to share that.
Hmm, that's interesting that we paid them to do that model and then you paid them to do that model as well.
I'll dive into that maybe a little later. The, Karen, do you have a, a main contact with OWEB that worked with Kleinschmidt on that, that I could maybe?
That, that wasn't OWEB money. That was me.
Oh, that was you?
And Ken Verley.
And, and who?
Ken Verley.
Okay, Ken sounds familiar. Maybe we can connect again. I, I'd like to see if there's a, I'd like to see where the two pieces of work maybe bridge.
I know that we, the years that we picked were for the low, median, and high flow for recent years.
That's okay, we can connect later. Our work was done about a year prior before then. So, before we all resume.
Maybe about the same time.
Possibly.
Yeah, the purpose was to, um, you know, try to see how water could flow.
That was a, a large part of the work we did with them too, yeah.
Yes, I'm happy to send that.
Perfect.
Send that over, and I know that I probably need to contact them and invite them again because they were trying to s- send me a link to download all of the data. And I never could get it to download. It was like too big a file.
Was, was Jason Kent your, was the?
No.
Anything else?
I don't think so. I think Holly's gonna talk to you next.
She's rescheduled for next time.
Oh, okay. Um, I hadn't heard that.
Was, was that because of the confusion about October versus September, or she just had something come up?
She said she had a meeting conflict.
Okay. I, I saw that on there, so I did actually bring you copies of the plan, if you guys would like them.
Sure, we would love it, and really, the big, and you can speak more to this, but the Water Resource Commission did vote to approve our integrated plan, so it's now state-recognized, correct?
Yes, yeah, last Friday, so. Last Friday, that was, that was nice. Yeah, it was Hardy County Day at the commission meeting last Friday, so. Uh, yes, I have a copy for each of you. If you would like a copy, I can bring you one.
Yeah, great.
Thank you so much. All right, any other comments or questions, Karen?
All right, uh, yeah, as mentioned, the the agenda did show, I probably should have mentioned this in in uh the agenda changes, but. Um, the. Which is good, because our. Projector's not working to broadcast anyway, but the uh presentation by Holly. Uh, the Harney Basin Community-Based Water Planning Project and Efforts. Next week or next court session?
October first.
October first, okay. Um, so then moving on then, old business flood mitigation planning. Um, I don't have anything to update on that, have you had any discussions or any? Development on?
On that flood mitigation planning? I think we could probably talk about the correspondence that we received from Klein Schmidt. And their scoping letter. Because we asked if they'd be willing to reengage. And we had a conversation with them, they outlined some of the tasks that they could complete and what a price range would be. And so if we want them to. Tear into that work, then we probably need to take action. We could talk about that flood mitigation and stuff.
Um, I don't know if I saw that or not, did it get sent to you or?
Well, yeah, and I sent it to the.
Did you?
Um, look for it. Are you engaged with Regional Solutions very much?
Uh, yeah.
Well, you know, when I see their. Monthly, you know, report of the different regions, you know, Eastern Oregon, we're. We're not one of the ones that they often, you know, are doing anything for, so I wonder if. They could help with the the expense. Of our flood mitigation efforts, whether it includes this proposal. Or some other ideas, or even, you know, hiring people to dredge. And, you know, improve the the flow. Um. I didn't know if that's.
I I don't know if that's with.
That's Courtney Crowell.
Yeah, and I just got a, just got an email from Courtney.
Cause I think we're about due for some attention, um. But we've got to do our our part of it to let them know and see what they can do.
Uh, looks like she might be here next week, so I will talk to her about that then.
Brandon, you wanna give a rundown of that scoping letter, or do you want me?
Sure, I can, I can tackle some points if you'd like, so um. Holly, was this put, this was put out there, Patty, right? So it's a real brief letter, it's um, uh, in August, uh, Commissioner Frank and I met with Jason Kent, who's our lead. With Klein Schmidt. Uh, we hit on our points and we, what we asked them was a. A high-level concept that that broke down how uh how the scope of work. Would be put together for a follow-up on the report. Uh, the alternatives analysis that they did in two thousand. Uh, twenty-two, and so uh that that breakdown or that proposed scope of work. Uh, is is contained in the, here, it it's really three parts. So uh, the first part is. Uh, addressing the latest information and incorporating that into the analysis, and that latest information's. Gonna be critical, we believe, because it's gonna have that flood information from this last spring. Uh, it would be. Uh, I'm retreading conversation here, but it 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 would be maybe a little short-sighted if we didn't incorporate the latest flood information into that analysis. So it makes all the sense in the world before we make a decision as a, as a county on which alternatives to select before. The second task, if you will, is the, is the uh update. To that list of alternatives, and so in the in the current iteration, you've got two alternatives. I believe there's six and eight. And within the report, that were found to be the most optimal based on the, based on. The selection criteria that we had developed and discussed during the the production of the report. Uh, they will readdress that. And also incorporate possibly a a few more that may make sense based on newer information or just. Uh, newer input. Uh, the third part of that is a public scoping element, and so when you have the the updates to the report. The next step would be, how do we, how do we then engage? Uh, into a decision-making process and how we move forward, how do we fund in a, in a. Relatively quick way, but also an informed way uh through a public discourse as much as possible. Um, I, it it's it's uh. Kinda lucky to have a Karen here, I suppose, because they could be a very beneficial partner in putting that. I feel, uh, putting that public face to a decision-making element on this. Because you 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 want that, that information and and. Knowledge uh in your decision-making as you select which direction you wanna do.
That's good, because the long-term, long, near-term um impacts of the fires that have. Created. What will be for many years, um, challenges to some of the flooding. Um, you know, it's not gonna be over in a couple of years, um, stuff doesn't grow back overnight. And um, maybe the wildfires won't. Be hitting our region as much as it has the last few years, but maybe it will, so. Um, that, to get that more. Integrated into it, because that wasn't really happening that much back when this study was first done. And, yeah, and now we have, you know, real, real in front of us impacts to help the analysis.
The uh, uh, when uh Commissioner Frank and I were were discussing a follow-up after Klein Schmidt. Provided their proposed scope, the next question is, what is the next steps that we can get the ball moving on this, so. Uh, and and jumping wherever it it makes sense, but the uh. They have as part of this scope, but a proposed budget amount that has a range. And you can see it in in the communication, at the, at the long end, I believe it was uh one hundred fifteen thousand. Uh. What Commissioner Frank and I would like to propose is uh. A response back with, uh, we'll agree to a hundred thousand. Uh, in a redevelopment of or a total development of that scope of work, so we can look to review and move forward on this project.
One of the, well, for one thing. We don't, we don't get. That money from the state until twenty-seven, but we can access those funds through a low or no interest. Loan through Biz Oregon, is that accurate?
Uh, we, we can explore that, yeah, um, the city's done similar. Uh, similar uh loan, so we probably could do the same thing.
I think that it would be. Probably naive to move forward with project implementation, even planning. Without having updated model information, so I do think it's important to reengage Klein Schmidt, I just heard from. An entity that is wanting to partner with us on some of this, and they asked why? Why isn't Klein Schmidt being asked, or are they unwilling to carry their feasibility work forward into implementation? And I think that's the conversation that we're having is about having them do that feasibility work. So they came back with a couple of ranges just for doing, I think, task one was redoing the model, task two. I don't know, and then task three was helping support for stakeholder coordination and development of next steps. And so they had two separate prices, when we had talked about this weeks ago, they had kinda thrown out. The figure of around sixty thousand, and I think that was when Patty was absent, and I remember we had talked about that figure. They came back a little bit higher, and they also have a quote for the cost of the stakeholder coordination. So what I proposed is if, if we were to pass some sort of a motion or a resolution to say that we authorize them. We authorize the funding of up to a hundred thousand dollars to complete those three tasks. Because I think we need to start. Doing the stakeholder coordination at the last meeting, I don't know if it was even before the meeting started or during, but. There was some conversation with our roadmaster, because one of those. Both of those alternatives, once you go out and look at them on the ground, when we had all those state agencies come. I don't think that the alternatives as presented by Klein Schmidt are probably the most feasible without some modification. For example, they talked about widening the bridge at Foley Slough to twice its width. In widening that channel, well, we just put that bridge in twenty-one, so that's not very financially responsible. To go in and tear that bridge out, but we could widen the channel to the capacity of the existing bridge. And then there was some culvert. And ditch propositions a little bit further south of that. But after talking to water master and landowners, it doesn't make sense to alter those ditches, then you start getting into water storage problems. But you could put in a big old box culvert right there, which in a flood event would let that flow go to the east. That's reasonable, and that's maybe something we could even accomplish this fall.
That's the, that's the kind of thing I love to hear is, you know, the ground truth with the people who who know. The impact and us knowing what we've already recently redone a bridge in practical to try to. You know, do it, this is, this will make us successful.
Well, but when you say the people that know, that was us and O E M and the Corps of Engineers. So now what we need to do is get landowners.
Yes, land, I meant landowners.
Will this work, is this something we're willing to allow?
Yeah.
And that's why I feel some sense of urgency on approving this, because if we start an expensive. I mean, that would be one of the least expensive projects on there. But if we start that. Before this modeling is done, and they come back and say, oh no, that's not good bang for your buck. That's not good, but if we're actually gonna get something done as a gesture of good faith to the community and to prevent catastrophic flooding this next year. We probably need to get going.
So what's their timeframe on having this work done?
We don't have that yet. Uh, we're gonna convey to them that tightens up the essence of course, but um. It would, it would be an ask on on our part to put some projected timelines down and see if we can't remember them, or still.
If we're, we're gonna hold off on any, any shovel projects. Of putting in a a box culvert, you're talking about having this work done first, right?
I don't, that's the conversation, because I feel like if you wait till you have all your ducks in a row, you'd never get anything done. But I do think it is important to have this model updated so that we can prioritize alternatives and try to get. Partnership and funding into the future. But that, that one particular alternative, I think it's alternative number eight, modified as I suggested. I think could potentially be completed, and Mr. Driscoll kinda made it sound like. That's something they can do, we can do that in-house.
So um, I do have the, on that three million dollars, I do have the award notification and the um. Uh, project. Uh, identification of what we wanna do. Which at this point, we don't have anything, we have their previous work. But we don't have a defined. Course of action that we wanna take yet, so I don't know, and I have a, I have a meeting scheduled with Biz Oregon on how to get that. That document filled out and sent back to them. But I'm not quite sure how to do that, because we don't know which which option we're gonna choose.
So uh, it sounds like there's two different paths that we should, we should probably consider. I would suggest the, the first one being uh with a sense of immediacy, discuss with Klein Schmidt. You know, like. As you develop your scope, if we elect to install a. A certain size of box culvert. That is. In relation to, did you say it was eight or six, I can't remember, one of the two. Uh. Do you see any potential, do you see any conflicts here with the work that you would do in the long term? And how much benefit can we get out of this if we spend our money and get this done now, knowing that we could have another flood event coming our way next spring? Which is the reason we hit the preliminary go button in the first place, try and convey water away from town as much as possible. Uh, and then also concurrently work on. The scope of work and or the project itself for, okay, so if you do this. Here's the rest of the science behind it, here's what the numbers say, here's what our analysis says for evaluation of further alternatives. For flood projects in the future, I don't know what the budget would be for installing that box culvert. So I don't know what our entire budget would be in the endgame, but that's something that you'd have to see after this work is. What kind of budgeting are we looking at?
That. Bridge work was done in twenty-one, the county did that, I believe, did they? So, so putting a box culvert in would be along the same lines, and we should be able to do it in-house. I'll get with Eric and find out what he thinks of the labor and. Materials and everything would be on that, get, at least get an estimate on it, so we know what we're looking at.
So if we, if we did decide that we wanted to take action to try to reengage them to appropriate some money for that purpose. But like you described. With the caveat that first and foremost, we want you to check on this alternative that we can do in-house. And make sure that that's still reasonable the way we're suggesting we modify it. If we were to do that, is it? Feasible for us to make those funds available? The, you know, like, if we make a motion to. Appropriate up to a hundred thousand dollars for task one, two and three as described in Klein Schmidt's scoping letter, do we have the money to do that?
On hand, like, right now?
Well, I mean, can we?
That would be, I think, what Judge Hart might, might have that conversation with Biz Oregon to see about interest-free loans that we can then use. The funding that we have coming to, is that, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then as far as doing the work, the culvert work itself. Um, we could possibly tap into uh. Road reserves. That we could then replenish with this money down the road, these are, I'll ask, I'll ask on that stuff when I talk with. With Biz Oregon on it, but um.
Does, does the City of Burns um have a role in in any of these discussions or potentially anything to contribute?
Uh, no, cause actually as on, as it relates to the the flooding, um, the dike work that we had done. This past year or this year or this spring, um. Uh, we split the cost on that, but in addition to that, then they needed to go out and get um. Their easement survey, to to see exactly that the boundaries of their easement were along the dike there. And also in the process of doing that, we had to tear out a whole bunch of fence. And uh, the bills come in for that, and they're asking us to help, help them with that. So I'm gonna say if they're asking us to help them with billing on the fence, that they're probably not gonna have. I mean, I could pro- propose it to them and see if they have a, a, a fund or a pool somewhere to maybe dip into for that work, but. I don't know.
I, I sure, I haven't had any conversation with anyone about this, but it just seems that perhaps the. Burns Urban Renewal Agency, uh. You know, if they can look at addressing blight, i.e. including blight from flooding, et cetera. If if some of the um money that they are starting to accumulate for that in the projects that they. Intended to do or will intend to do in the future. You know, ca- can that be used for certain parts of um this or not? Because, you know, this, I could see this being a recurring thing unless we can help address. The most important junctures of it. I mean, I mean, I, I just want people to do what they, all of us to do what we can, because none of us have, are well-resourced.
Even, even if they can tap into those funds. Cause I think most of the east side of town is within their U R A. So even if they can tap into those funds to, to ma- uh. To clean out the drainage ditch that runs through the east side of town that was the part of the problem. Would be their part of it, we'll do our part of it, they do their part of it, and together we end up with mitigating factors that. That help prevent this or minimize it next time, so, but I'll have that discussion with the city.
Thank you.
Manager, and um. Yeah.
So would it? Brandon, do you think it, I don't wanna put things off and kick them down the road too much, but. If Judge Hart is gonna have a conversation with Biz Oregon about how we can go about getting those funds. And the road department to see what an estimate is of that. Can, can we reach out to Klein Schmidt and say we're, we're working on appropriating that funding? But we would like you to prioritize. This modified project. Because that's, we're only talking about two, two or three weeks until our next meeting, and even though it seems like an eternity in the grand scheme of how slow. Things work, that timing might work out just right, Judge Hart will have the information at the next meeting, they can say, yep, we can. Make that, do that reasonable?
I'll, I'll engage your conversations with Jason on this and and talk and.
So they're prepared to discuss.
For a app like this and how we'd like to proceed. He'll, he'll most likely want reassurances that the funding will come through on this. And so I'll, I'll keep him updated as we can.
Without, without doing a whole bunch of major. Moving around, which I didn't even know how much room we would have to move around. Again, the two pots of money that we have to dip into are the two line items that we have to dip into, just like we did during the flood. This year would be our um contingency line, which. This year would be our um, contingency line, which we have about sixty-three thousand dollars in, but that'll be, it'll be fifty-three thousand. Um, and then the, the projected transfer from general fund to the operating reserve of two hundred and fifty thousand.
In my, in my opinion.
Which we didn't do any of last year because we used it, we dipped into it for flood response.
If, if we can't find a way to get early access to our state grant this year. Then I think we need to move forward until we have access to those funds. With the information that we have. I don't think it's prudent to spend a hundred thousand dollars. Right now, out of our reserves. To start this model work, especially when there are some alternatives that have identified themselves, but I'm pretty confident we'll be able to get access to that money. I just don't. I don't think I would shuffle everything around.
Right, I agree.
But one of the questions I'm gonna have to ask. Uh, when I have a talk with Regional Solutions and, and Biz Oregon is. Expenses we incur now, will we be able to reimburse for when we do get access to those funds? You know, replenishing our, our reserves or replenishing. Uh, or just, just being able to. To backfill behind what we spend now.
See if they have a form that can cover the base if they're, if they're in general agreement. Yeah, that'd be good.
Judge Hart, when do you anticipate having those, any of the, have those conversations with Biz Oregon?
Um. Well, I was, I was supposed to have a call. I missed it in my schedule somewhere. I have to follow up on it again. Um. When was that? Uh. Next week.
Next week.
E- either way, next week. It sounds like, it sounds like Courtney Kraus is gonna look at it coming through on Wednesday next week. And uh, Sh- Shanna uh, from Biz Oregon. Um, I had called to, to work with her on filling out that uh, worksheet of what we're proposing to do with that money. Um. First part of next week.
Gotcha. Well, so I can hold off on having uh, extended conversations with Jason until we, we feel confident we're gonna move forward. With our resources to rate me on two. Um, if it's only a week, it's, it's fine. Uh, they are expecting some feedback, but I'm sure they'll be fine to wait and read on this.
I, I'm gonna say probably by Wednesday, I should be able to have all those answers on the estimate and everything.
So you'll follow up with Judge Hart and then you'll talk to them?
Cool.
Oh, the other thing that is worth mentioning is the tribe is very interested in building a levee. On the reservation, which I think was maybe alternative nine in that Kleinschmidt report, but that was. One of the alternatives listed and that's something that they are pursuing, but if they get that work done this year, which I hope for the, their sake they do. That will protect the colony, but it's gonna push all that water east and without an outlet for that water to go pass Foley Drive, it'll be probably.
But a limit, yeah, if there's not some kind of an outlet under Foley Drive, what it's gonna end up doing is just channeling it right to Foley Drive and down Foley.
So uh, part of this work is also looking at the potential impacts for conveying large volumes of water. Right? And that's also why that third task is critically important when making decisions because when you're moving water from one spot, you're. Putting it to another. So the potential impacts and the, the dialogue to consider what. That may be with the public is critical in my opinion. They consider when you're choosing future responses. I don't know where that fits with uh, our, our sense that we need to get this potential box culvert installed, but. Um, in the big picture, that, that feedback is critically important so that folks know that. Those potential impacts being considered in the decision-making.
Based on what we saw this year during, during our flooding this year. A- and the water that was able to move to the east, is there any more capacity to put anything over there?
Uh, you're talking to the planner, so I don't, I don't know from the engineering side what that would look like. You know, it's a good question. You know, it, it's gonna go somewhere, obviously. And so if you, I, I don't know what a percentage is, if you will, if you wanted to break it down at a high level, what percentage of, of. Floodwaters would we be able to convey from our populated areas to the east? How much more of that would you get? That's, that's a numbers scenario that Kleinschmidt can. Run through their, their program that they developed specifically for our watershed. That's also why I'm really curious about the work they did with uh, with Karen. Um, uh. They have to be pretty aligned, I would imagine, but.
I wonder if they've done any work for the tribe also, that we don't know about.
Well, you know, I, regardless of communication on that, I, I think they're, they're gonna be tied together. I think that makes a lot of sense, but we. Uh, that's a great question. That how much, you know, how much can you move to the east? Yeah, I think it, it, you know, you've got your extended drainages out there. Where does it all go? Is it a poisoning creek? Does it just fill up more than, than what it did? You know, we are a closed basin, so it's not like we're gonna.
I mean, you push, you push more, more water to the east. At the head of the, of the valley, you know, at, at Foley. And it keeps moving east somewhere, what you end up having is Highway twenty becomes, again, becomes that, that dike that holds it back. To the north side of twenty and, and it doesn't really have any outlet to be able to get further south.
Hmm. So the, the mod, I will tell you that the work they did in twenty-two and two, uh, their models showed what those impacts would be, at least. From an engineer standpoint, you know, and so that's what you've gotta kind of lean into. What do the numbers say? What does the topography and the data say this water's gonna go? It'll be, it'll be a really important question. Will we um, reassess this with Kleinschmidt?
If that model shows that it's gonna push to the east and then get built up by Highway twenty, then another urgent need might be. Some kind of um, additional culverts in Highway twenty to allow it to continue to move to the south.
Oh, boy, working with ODOT. Oh, boy, working with ODOT.
Yeah.
That's something that wasn't addressed as alternatives in that Kleinschmidt report that surprised me because twenty and seventy-eight are both effectively dykes without proper. Culverts and passage, so I think that's something to explore. My other thought, my other question is, I wonder if the Watershed Council could assist in, in this alternative. That we're looking at. There's a small culvert coming under the road and a relatively new concrete and hmm. I don't know if I'd call it a head yet. You can drop boards in it and you can send water three different ways. Is. Is the Watershed Council able to, or through those O W E P small grants? Able to help offset that cost for the landowner so that by us doing this, they don't incur a big cost of having to put in a new irrigation structure? Is there grant money available for that, you think?
Probably not through small grants. But I'm not quite sure which structure you're talking about.
It's.
Where it could go three ways. Are you talking about twenty or seventy-eight?
No, no, this, this where a little culvert right before you get to the bridge that goes over Foley Slough, going down Foley Drive. There's just a culvert this big and they've got, I guess it'd be one, two, three, four. Concrete pillars and you can drop boards in different ways to send water.
Oh, okay, yes. Um. Yes. Either O W E P or um.
Does N R C S do that kind of thing?
N R C S can, can do that or um.
I think N R C S already used all their funds.
I think either through H D P or the Soil and Water Conservation District, there's some legislative fund money. That could maybe come with that as well.
I, I went and asked them and I could be wrong, but I thought they said they were out of money for this. They, they've used it on projects already this year.
Yeah, they may have everything allocated. But yes, that could be a possibility.
Um, alright, so I've got some marching orders. Anything else on flood mitigation? Moving along then, next topic is Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty. Um, during last county court session, we, we uh, talked about and authorized.
We'll leave you. Sorry.
No.
Just wait.
No.
Sorry. Who's leaving?
You didn't have permission.
Um. Okay, yeah, anyway, next, uh, last county court session, we talked about uh, making a donation to the Harney County Long Term Recovery Group of ten thousand dollars. We um. Made a motion and approved that, but just for our record keeping, uh, we thought it would, or I thought it would be a good idea to actually uh, solidify that with a resolution. And then um, I had the Long Term Recovery Group also just submit a letter making that formal, formal request. Uh, just goes to record keeping and all. So um, I have the Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty. Uh, in the matter of approving a donation to the Long Term Recovery Group. Um, whereas Harney County Long Term Recovery Group has requested financial support in the amount of ten thousand dollars to assist in recovery and resilience efforts. And whereas uh, the court acknowledges that this contribution reflects Harney County on, Harney County's ongoing commitment to the welfare and the resilience. Of its residents, and whereas the Harney County Court recognizes the vital role of the Long Term Recovery Group serving.
Friends.
The community. Providing essential resources and supporting long-term recovery initiatives for the county. And whereas the donation of ten thousand dollars may be leveraged by the Long Term Recovery Group to meet matching fund requirements. And to secure additional grant funding for future projects and further benefiting, further benefit Harney County. Uh, now therefore, um. Was gonna say to, as I was reading that, thought of something else I was gonna mention. Now I lost it. Um, anyway, with that said, then I, I would make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty.
I second.
A motion's been made and seconded to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty in the matter of approving a donation. To the Long Term Recovery Group. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And opposed? Hearing that motion carried.
Oh, just real quick while we're saying. To your knowledge, is it expressed in the comprehensive plan that we have a zero, a net loss? Policy from the county about roads? You know what I mean? That we don't support the closure of roads. If you can't answer right away, I don't mean to derail the agenda. We can, we can get to it later. I just look like the answer base.
I don't think so.
Yes, if you would look, that's, that was my only question, but thanks.
Um, no, we would.
Yeah, thank you.
What I was gonna say on this donation, then, we researched uh, look, looking into using the lottery funds, the economic development lottery funds for this donation. Rather than funds from our um, uh, contingency line. And actually so I could rescind and say we do have sixty-three thousand dollars in our.
Oh, nice.
So one of the provisions was for uh, donations or contributions to local nonprofits. And we figured that any dollars that come from us and go to that local country, local nonprofit for use here in Harney County. Materials and supplies are gonna be bought here in Harney County, so again, it all filters down and ends up staying here in Harney County.
I agree.
So, so those funds for that ten thousand dollar donation will come out of the lottery, uh, economic development funds. Um. Division five twelve proposed rule amendment.
Okay, this petition for the Division five twelve proposed rule amendment is in the packet. There is a very lengthy narrative that I think does a really thorough job of explaining the history of the water issues in the basin. And just to go over what the amendment proposes from a high level. This amendment is very similar to scenario B that was presented to the RAC when they did their first model runs. I think they had five different scenarios labeled A through E, maybe A through F. And this, this was scenario B. Which also gets us to a stable water level in thirty years. But it reduces the economic impact to the county. And so what this does. Right now with the currently proposed rule from RAC five twelve, I think there's a immediate. Seventy-five percent reduction in Weaver Springs. I'm not gonna reme- be able to remember all the reductions because I can only remember the comparison between scenario B and what our proposed is, but what this is. Basically what it's doing is it is only localizing the reductions to the areas. Where there's a problem, which is Weaver Springs Northeast Crane. Weaver Springs would be an immediate reduction, which anecdotally, I have heard that Weaver Springs has already basically self-regulated itself. Because there is no water, they're sucking air, and so they're, they're not even turning those wells on. So a lot of that damage has already been done. Those. Those have already left by attrition. And then the other thing that's included in this is. The three sub areas of Silvies, Silver Creek. And Lower Donner Blitzen would have ten percent reductions by voluntary agreement by twenty forty. The municipalities are removed because, because that was contentious. It didn't make sense and they didn't consult with the municipalities about that. Another thing that's important that is, was changed in the wording of this petition. Let me also state. This was a moving target and had to be submitted within a certain deadline because of a statute. And Mrs. Kennedy was, was kind of asking about why some of these discussions happened and how they could happen. And there is a statute that there can be a petition to amend and oppose rule, but it has to be done within a certain timeline. And so we did kind of have to move fast, but one of the, and I felt like this amendment. Embodied all of the conversations that we've had in the last eight or nine months about the RAC five twelve plan. One of the things that caused me concern is we have talked about, and I personally feel that the sub areas. That are in surplus like Lower Donner Blitzen should not be part of the critical groundwater area. However, it is advised that. The only way any of those sub areas are going to be removed from a critical groundwater area designation is through litigation. There is a worry that if we present. An alternative plan to the Water Resource Commission that doesn't include the entire basin that the department outlined, they're not going to accept it. And so there's a caveat in there that says, we do not believe these should be part of the critical groundwater area, however. Paraphrasing, but basically we realized that we have to include them to appease the Water Resource Commission. Uh, there's also a change in some of the boundaries. There was a lot of talk about the Windy Point Boundary because there's some geological features that don't make sense. Another important thing that this would do is it would make each of those sub areas. A separate reservoir, and what that does into the future. Is if this amendment were accepted as proposed, just the way it is. That would, all of those sub areas would become part of the critical groundwater area. However. That could be reconsidered on a reservoir by reservoir basis in the future because the way the proposed plan is written right now, the proposed rule. The entire Harney Basin is a shared reservoir, and that's been a bone of contention in those RAC meetings continuously. Because there's so much science and data that says it is not all one reservoir, but they say it's a shared water reservoir. So this would split those up and it would give them the ability in the future. If they can either showcase through voluntary agreements or through better scientific data that they are not in a deficit. They could probably be considered for removal. So I think one of the. One of the rules for the department, when they go through this planning and thin statutes, they have to minimize the economic impact. And I don't feel like their proposed rules that came from the RAC five twelve process did that. Another bone of contention that's. Described in this is never did the RAC make recommendation. There was never any leadership structure formed within the RAC. The department came and ran the meetings. And never did the RAC say, this is our formal recommendation. And. I feel like a lot of what is in this amendment, while it is not perfect, is more reflective of what. The local stakeholders said in the RAC meetings, it's reflective of what was said during the public comment that was received. And I feel like if the department would have brought this before the Water Commission, they would have. And I feel like if the department would have brought this before the Water Commission, they would have had a lot more support from the community.
And it does address reducing economic impact unlike the proposed rules right now do.
And I, and of course stability of groundwater is really important as well, and this plan still gets us to stable groundwater within thirty years. So I think that this amendment is more favorable than their proposed rules, and because of this the public comment period has reopened. And it's real confusing, but I think it's reopened on both the RAC five twelve rule and on the amendment. I think you can comment on them and it's separate, and that comment period is open until October seventh. I am not sure when the deadline is to sign the petition if people wish to do so.
Who would know?
Yeah, but there was, um, I, I'll, I'll follow up with, with Representative Owens, because they were supposed to send us some signup sheets that the public could, could come and sign the petition. Um, but I wanna say, seems like in that meeting down at the community center. I asked that question, and I wanna say it was December.
I think you might, I think it might be by that December meeting, which I think is December the twelfth.
That might have been it, something like that. Cause I, I mean, that usually it's just a matter, like your explanation, Commissioner Frank, just now was very helpful. Okay, because it is a large document, it is, you know, technical by nature, and, and needs to be read carefully, and a lot of people can i- if, if you're providing accurate characterization, the way you describe that, that would help people understand whether they then might wanna sign the petition or not. You know, people wanna know what they're signing, but, uh, I, I, I did read it, I did take the time, but I appreciate how you just characterized it. It's very helpful. So how do we get that, if, once we find out the deadline? I don't know if you ever wanna record yourself saying something like that, and we put a link to it or something. I know, I just, you know, huh? That might not be a good idea, that might be a bad idea, I'm just saying, I like to make it relatively easy for people to become informed so they can opt to do something if they want. And if there's time, and if there's whatever, or maybe just this recording, I mean, the fact that you've recorded, this is being recorded, would be, you know. People can go to that that time, minute, and, and play it for the next five minutes, and then, then they, if they wanna sign the petition. Those petitions can't be signed online, can they? They have to be in person. Well, whatever, let, it'd be great if we could get all the, all these little questions figured out and see if we wanna do anything like that, and, um.
I think there were, I think it had to be a, a physical signature.
Okay, but just so people know where, where they are, and that's just my thought, is that, um, I found your recitation of, of the highlights very, uh, helpful. Just now.
I, I guess the action that I would ask for, even though we're already listed as one of the petitioners is if it is agreeable to the court as a whole that we sign it, can have it signed as Harney County. As a whole, as a governing body. To sign them.
Um, well, I kinda did that when I signed. Uh, cause when, as the entity that I was citing for was Harney County on the petition, so. And again, that, that petition or that group of people in the paper was the primary petitioners. And everybody else are, I don't know what the difference, it wouldn't know how that really plays, but primary petitioners versus the other petitioners.
Not to get too far into the weeds, but Kennedy asked earlier to, to have the refuge buy into this petition, to have the refuge, the tribe, the municipalities in the county all buy in is a huge coup. But one of the things that the refuge had to be able to show to their superiors is how this makes ecological sense for them. And so one of the questions that came up during the RAC meetings over and over was, we don't have ample data on s- spring flow. And so by incorporating, getting more data on spring flow into the future in that and keeping the lower Blitzen in there by voluntary agreement, which by the way, by their own admission approximately ninety percent of the lower Blitzen water users are on board for voluntary agreements. They are, they are very optimistic about this and very supportive of it. So but they were facing thirty-nine percent reductions, and they're in a sub-area that has a surplus of water use for recharge. And they were gonna be curtailed thirty-nine percent. So this, this is.
Amazing.
The overall socioeconomic effects of the proposed five twelve rules would have cut this county to the bone now. Uh, I'm, I mean, myself personally, I envisioned all the things that we're trying to do, eco- economic development wise, would have been gone. And that's, that's within the, the municipality areas, let alone what it would have done to our rural agricultural industry. It, it, I, I could, I could foresee Harney County
And our
blown away.
Our electric, our electric grid and the, you know, ability for our rural electric co-op to even be affordable for the services they provide, you know, just, I mean, it just, there's so many impacts. And when a thirty-nine percent cut is proposed in an area that isn't having the declines and is a hundred percent ready for voluntary agreements and close monitoring, why do that? I mean, it. Can the refuge provide some of the ecological impact stuff that we need on, on our others work too, even though they're further down? I mean, or not?
For what other stuff?
For our flood mitigation efforts that, that Klein Schmidt, et cetera, that, um, as we're looking to justify, explain, um, describe uh, what, with flood mitigation, what the impacts can be.
I think the refuge is willing to work with us however they can, however, the Silvies River does not terminate in the Mount Here Lake on most years. It's fed, it's fed from the south, and so that drainage is really not in their purview.
Okay, alright. Some of what is in their purview may at least provide the thought and the language for analysis farther north. Just cause they, that's, that's their game, they know that stuff.
There is still an emphasis in this petition on supporting and funding well remediation. And doing more studies because, like Karen said earlier, a lot of people don't even know how deep their well is drilled. And a lot of the dry well information that was discussed during the RAC meetings was hypothetical based on uh, groundwater models and well logs. But if people really are having trouble with wells, there are a host of variables that it could be. It could be that the water table has dropped and they need to deepen it, but it could be that they have an old well or that it was cased improperly, and so I do think we need to keep up the pressure on. And once all this dust settles, maybe we need to talk about a real education, maybe get on the radio so that people know. If you're having trouble, here are the resources, and here's where to go.
Any other discussion on the division five twelve proposed rule amendment?
So for, for today, for action, is there action?
Nope.
Other than the petition, I'll get the petition and, and, um. I, I, I just, just was talking with Holly, I think I mean, it is a big document for people to, to, um, digest.
It is.
So we're gonna work on a summarization of it. Um, we'll use our AI. Um, but, I mean, you know, it's a, it's a good exercise. That, that really allows people to, to, you know, have a C A summary. They can still have the, the original document along with it to, to prepare or whatever, but if it give it spits out a product that, that'll be a good tool for people to get a summarized view of it. It might help.
I'm happy to give it a sanity check once, once it does that, if you want me to.
So, um, I'll work on that anyway.
Sounds good.
Um, correspond, oh, just go ahead.
And just, just to check boxes, Dominic said, there's no red flags, it's good to go. He said it was.
On, on the.
So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew from a legal standpoint, we're alright with that.
Okay. Um, correspondence, any, any correspondence to note?
I don't know.
Okay.
Oh. It might have just been an email, but officially the Forest Service has rescinded the roadless rule. And it, and that happened a while ago, but I just got the email yesterday.
Yeah, and I've seen several, several emails, both outside, third party, that are talking about that and internal. I haven't had a chance to, to research that and its implications myself. Um, on my reading list.
Some reason I thought it had already been done, but I don't know.
Yeah, it has, they had already, I think the Forest Service had already rescinded that roadless rule.
Yeah.
But there was some, I don't know, uh, activist groups or whatever that I don't think fought off or that it was legitimately rescinded or so, I don't, that's what I'm saying, I'm not
Okay.
I'm not fully aware of all the implications there. Um. Scheduling, county court. Uh, I don't have any conflicts coming up, so we should be good to go for the next two regularly scheduled county court dates of October first and fifteenth. But.
October first, so usually the first Wednesday from noon to one is, is when I have those Naco uh, Justice Public Safety meetings, and I know it, it doesn't always work out great to, um. A ju- uh, recess in time. You know, totally recess and do it and come back, but if you can just kinda keep that in mind for scheduling, is it, you know.
So I, I had thought about that, and I think it, we've had some pretty robust conversations in the past year, two years. And I think somewhere around the time when I first started, we had changed our county court start times to be a little bit later. To do, uh, accounts payable at nine thirty and regular session at ten. Do we wanna look at starting those again earlier? Uh, maybe accounts payable at nine with county court starting at nine thirty?
I could do that.
That would, that would give us time to potentially conclude by noon.
Right.
Or, or we need to start maybe looking at that we're gonna, yeah, I hate to make people stick around through the lunch hour or whatever. That we need to start looking at recessing at twelve and re- reconvening at one o'clock or something.
I know, years ago, many years ago, different county court, they did things differently, and I'm not necessarily saying do it their way, but they would always they would always recess at noon, then the three of them would go out and have lunch out in public, you know, use a local restaurant, whatever, then they come back. And then many times, most of what they reconvened to do was their general deliberations and stuff, but regardless, they would recess at noon, and they would reconvene, take care of everything else, so nothing was rushed per se. But like you say, they always scheduled the other people who came in to present or to, you know. Or, or, or robust discussion that the public would be very interested, they, they did that earlier on, just food for thought, but, um. And I, and I, you know, I'm sorry that this particular meeting is on a county court day throughout the year. It's, you know, three o'clock, Washington DC time, whatever. But I am finding that some of these, um, meetings, I'm learning about things that are very important and that I share.
Well, even not just that, though, there's been quite a few occasions where we've run to twelve thirty, one o'clock before we're done. So, um, instead of doing that, um, either agree upon that we'll recess at twelve and come back at one. Or move our start time up a little bit earlier.
And see how it works.
I like the idea of doing both.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so then for October sessions, then do we want to change our start time to nine o'clock?
Nine o'clock for vouchers?
Regular session?
Yes, I don't see any problem. Do you think any of any partners or any staff would have a problem with?
Not, not that I, not that I'm aware of at this time, you know, at this point, no.
Oh, we can just get that word out, that'd be great.
Um, so, so we'll do that, make that change. Yep. And, um. In addition to that, as I was coming in today to work, uh, we haven't done any rural meetings in the past year.
I had that written down for something, county court meetings in the rural areas.
Yeah, so, so, you know, I think maybe we ought to start looking at, uh, trying to get back out to our. Uh, town hall.
So, those meetings were good, um, sometimes there were some communities where you had good attendance, I E. Fields, they're all, all the way down there, they really make an effort to show up for that. And it was very good. People, communities are busy, there's sports games, there's games, there's, you know, whatever, it can never, it's never the perfect. But I still think making the effort and, um, doing that at least once a year, you know, is, is good.
So I, I, I noticed, I don't know if it was intentional, but, um, when I was running for office, I was attending some of those rural meetings, and one of them that they did down in Fields coincided with a school board meeting, where the school board had their meeting and then we did our town hall afterwards. So combining two functions with, you know, people are busy, you know, and then whatever, at the end of the day, they don't wanna have multiple nights where they have to go out. So in planning these, maybe we could plan them in the communities where we're gonna do them in conjunction with other meetings that they have.
Yes.
Might help.
Let, let, let them say that's a great idea and that would work for our community or not.
So just saying we're gonna be here on this date, maybe ask their, their input of when would be a good time for us to come? That would be most advantageous or, or availability for their community. Okay, so we'll, we'll work on starting to schedule if you're in agreeance.
I think it's, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah. Um, okay, so, rural meetings. I don't have anything else for scheduling, uh, well. Move through my calendar here real quick, like. Um, C Act meeting on the twenty-fifth and John Day. And then as for my schedule, I'll be out of the office the twenty-sixth, the twenty-ninth, and thirtieth. And that takes us up to the next county court session, so.
I'd just like to mention for general interest that on, uh, Wednesday, the twenty-fourth of September, at seven PM at the Desert Historic Theater here in town. The Harney Way is going to be shown, um, and so people are invited to, to come to that. Let's see, yeah. I have a lot of meetings slash Zoom meetings, but nothing, uh, out of the ordinary, um, I did wanna ask. Oh, I'll ask during general deliberations, um, no, that's fine. The AOC District Two meeting that I will attend by Zoom and that possibly you two will be attending in person is October second at, from ten to three. Okay, thank you. A, AOC District Two meeting.
And I'm, I'm, I've got it on my schedule, I plan on going, um. It's ten AM, so I'm gonna drive over in the morning, come back and.
Good opportunity for you to chat. If you have any, if you want any more information from Jefferson County on, on why they're pleased with that grant writing service, what it has done for them. Um. That's where I first, I wasn't that excited about grant writing services until after their conversation last year. Thank.
Followed up on that somewhat, hadn't you, Holly?
Can you remind?
On the grant writing, Jefferson County Grant Writing Services?
Well.
Or, yeah, Jefferson County?
I mean, I had a conversation with, uh, Commissioner Taylor, I don't know it.
Yeah, just, I mean, kinda what they're paying for and what they, what it entails for them.
When we were at county college, he originally told me that it was, um, like seventeen fifty a month, seventeen hundred dollars for those services, which included the administration of those grants. But they only ask for twenty hours a month, uh, they're open to doing more or less at any other projects.
But that would be a good way, if, if they're good at these kinds of things for any. A good way, if, if they're good at these kinds of things for any congressly delegated spending, things that. You know, especially with our strategic planning going forward, where we can put efforts as, in the cities as well. On some of the big kind of grants. Um, and you know, whether it's for law enforcement roads or, you know, infrastructure.
The only thing I, that I would be concerned with is. Grants are kind of ebb and flow. And, and sometimes they're really locked into a specific purpose and use. That we may not be. Eligible for. And paying somebody a constant amount every month with seven, one thousand seven hundred fifty. Which is not too bad, really, um. But having months where we're paying them and not, and not having any work for them.
I mean, we would, we would need to be ready for it. We would need to, that's why I said our strategic planning should help us. That is ongoing now this fall to, you know, have, have some of the major goals, a major. The, the goals lead to some of the asks and the finances and the stuff and a strategy of. These things, let's see what kind of grants, these things, let's do this, you know, different type of efforts.
Um, and this is more, this is, the, there needs to be more discussion by, by the court. On where we want to go and what direction with our economic development funds. Um, but for, for that amount seventeen fifty, we could very well. I- if we chose to go the route of contracting with another economic development contractor. That could be part of their services. Is that, you know, grant writing and administration as we come up with the, for the need for it, um. You know, other things like managing our enterprise zone, once we have that reinstated, um.
What's been the holdup on that?
On, on the enterprise zone?
Yeah.
Um, the cities, while they had their resolutions ready to, to be adopted. They had more questions and it fell into a time where if you remember Mr. Fish, Art Fish. From Biz Oregon, he was the guru on enterprise zones and, and he wrote the book on it. He wrote the statutes on it. He retired. So it was right at the time I'm trying to get these pushed through and everything and I had tried to schedule him to, to attend this, the city council meetings. And I got a reply back, oh, sorry, Mr. Fish is retired and we're training up his replacements. So since then, they have communicated directly with, uh, Biz Oregon, the cities have and asked their questions. And I think they're pretty much have gotten all their questions answered, I, I believe, um. I had a visit with, uh, uh, Feather Sam Huskies last week. And she was going to follow up with them and see if they still had any more questions or not, um, but I think. That was the hurdle was we couldn't really do it until they did their resolutions and then we could do our part of it.
I, I understand that, you know, what, what it comes down to as far as a choice to do it or not has a lot had to do with. Are you willing to forego those property taxes for a number of years? For them, for that business to, you know, come and. And then, and as you've often said, Judge Hartis, well, if you don't have anyone coming anyway. You know, then at least you're getting a business in town and then at some point they will be paying those taxes, so you're not really losing out. On those property taxes that aren't, where there's no one to tax.
My, my analogy to it is that over the years in my previous employment. As I took the cost of living increase, I took those dollars and put them directly into my retirement fund. I never saw them, I never missed them. So a- at this point right now, new business development. While the taxes we won't, we and the municipalities will not see initially for three to five years, depending on what, what, uh, is. Uh, agreements are made with any new development, we won't see the tax revenue off of those, off of those. Uh, businesses, but the community will see it in secondary, uh, dollars spent within the community.
Right.
Um, so, so half of it you will see and the other half you won't see, but in three to five years, then you will start seeing it. It's like, but it's like saving for your retirement. If you put it all away today, you don't miss it.
More fun to spend as you go.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I didn't mean to get off on that, but I just, I just didn't know if there was a fundamental, uh, philosophical.
No, I think I need to follow up with, with Biz Oregon, uh, with Feather. And find out what she, what she found out, if there's any more work we need to do there to get, you know, get their questions answered. But, um, I think for the most part they're, they're, should be ready to go with it.
Thank you.
Um.
Any other scheduling?
Any other?
No, but you.
Hmm, there's Tri-Corner Collaborative Meeting in Lakeview. Which that collaborative takes in some of the hard and heavy, I won't be able to attend that and I don't think.
I wish they would allow Zoom. I know, I know that it changes the nature of meetings, but. It increases transparency and, you know. Saves on travel dollars.
But I don't plan on attending that, the DSL Director will be here next week. From Tuesday twenty third through Friday, I believe it's a new director. Hmm, that, I believe there's a CCP meeting from twelve to three thirty on Wednesday, the twenty fourth. And as Commissioner Doro pointed out, at seven PM on the twenty fourth, they are showing the Harney Way, which is. About a thirty minute long video that highlights some of the collaborative work that's been done in the county. It's pre- professionally done video. And the goal is, they are going to use that video to show agency. People so that they understand that Harney County. Cannot be managed the same as the west side of the state and it's a really well-done video, so.
Is that done by the partnership?
This was done. I want to say the, as weird as this is gonna sound, the Birds Alliance of Portland, which used to be the Audubon Society. Was a big partner in that, High Desert Partnership was a partner in that, but it. It really focuses on the collaboration and where we've gotten in the last ten years and. The different ecosystems in agriculture in Harney County. Man, when you, when you live here for a while, you don't understand that people don't, they just don't even get what you're talking about. When you're talking about wild flooding. And they're, they're trying to outlaw flood irrigation all the time. That's gonna come up in the short session again. And what they are thinking of is flood irrigation, it's not what we're doing at all. For those people from the High Desert Museum to stand out in some of those meadows. And get their head wrapped around the fact that this is not tilled up every year, this wasn't seeded, this is native grass, native meadow. They don't even get it. So, hopefully that'll be a good video to help our play. There is a, a party and as conveners of the community-based water planning, I'm sure we're all invited on Thursday, the twenty fifth, I think it's six PM. Karen was talking about that.
Are you?
And there's a BIC meeting on Tuesday, the thirtieth. In McRand from ten to two.
What is the main focus of the BIC at this time as the forest plan is about to get done? I mean, is the BIC, did the BIC provide comments as the BIC? Or just, they just worked with the Forest Service throughout the years?
Uh, we're just continuing to work with them and I wasn't able to attend the last steering committee meeting. So I'm not sure if all we're waiting on is this revision. To be accepted. I, I like the idea that we are going to keep working together even after this plan is done. But I'll be.
But it would be on a more occasional basis?
We'll see, they still have steering committee meetings all the time.
Hmm.
But. That's it between now and next county court.
Say, um, I missed one, one item I needed to ask about, um, I have a, an issue that we need to schedule an executive session for. Um, and it will, it will entail, um, county councils, um, input. So it'll be to receive, uh, guidance from county council. His schedule is, uh, on Monday. From eleven to one, uh, I think an hour should be more than enough time, so basically eleven to twelve or on Tuesday. Um. On Tuesday, uh. Basically anytime before ten or anytime after ten thirty on Tuesday, huh?
Monday works better for me, I don't know, it does.
So, and he said, so basically eleven to one or after two?
Either works for me on Monday, the twenty second.
Hmm. What works for you?
I'm good for either, for any of it.
I'd say maybe later on Monday would work better for me. The two, the two o'clock one.
Um, are you, are you going to the Tri-Corner?
No.
Okay. Um, so, yeah, I'm good with that, two o'clock.
Mm-hmm.
Let's call it two thirty because I don't know exactly what his, you know, if he's running over or something, so it's two thirty, okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Um.
As long as it only takes an hour.
Monday?
Yes, Monday, the twenty second.
Let me just time for my.
That's all I had, that's all I had for scheduling. Um, if you don't mind. I'm gonna go first on, um. On updates and, and whatnot. So we had, on the ninth. We had the first planning meeting with contractors for the jail. And it was a, it was kind of a, a session to identify the needs. The wants. And the G, G whiz, nice to have elements or whatever, and then they take it as, with this design build process, they then take that. And design what they can design with the funds that we have available. We did a walk around, the whole courthouse, the jail facility, uh, everything, um.
Great.
Did that brainstorming session exercise with the, the needs and, and whatnot and. And, uh, was, was really good, it was a really good session. I am still trying, working with, um. Contracting attorney that we used on the event center as well. Uh, to, to get a contract done that we can get signed by the, by the contractor. Um, we're waiting on the IGA from the state for the ARPA funds, the three million dollar ARPA funds. On what the parameters of that's gonna be and what their expectations are gonna be for, for coordination. Uh, prior to spending those funds, so I'm waiting on that IGA before the contractor or the attorney can, can finalize the contract. Um. Was able to find the blue, well, thanks to the clerk, was able to find the blueprints for the original jail.
Oh.
And the addition that was done ninety-nine, two thousand, somewhere around there, whenever that was, project was done, twenty-one, something like that. Um. So that helped, that'll help the contractors with that portion of it. So that covers that, um. I attended, oh. Tomorrow, um, just through happen, kind of reviewing some paperwork here and there. And discussing with our insurance agent, um, for CIS Waldo and their, and our point contact agent. We still had a bunch of facilities or buildings down at the fairgrounds that were on our insurance policy. You know, buildings that I knew that had been torn down and right off the bat, he mentioned like four H bathroom and this and that, um.
Hmm.
And so he's coming over tomorrow afternoon, one thirty, we're gonna go walk around, make sure that his list and our list and what's on the ground is, is. Match, matches up. And, um. And then he said that they would backdate it back to July first as far as any policy. Cost or whatever would go, but, um. One of the things, I mean, like right now, I think one of the, one of the buildings they just poured concrete in, I don't remember what it was before, but they put the scales in it. And the scales, the cost of the scales are not, you know, not, uh. Not an item that's on the policy, so, and the scales are pretty expensive items, you know, ten thousand dollars, twenty thousand dollars. So, uh, anyway, I'm gonna go out there and kind of get that all lined out with our insurance and coverage and make sure that that's all, all accurate. Um.
I had that on my calendar for today, but it's tomorrow and you've got that covered and we're going down there, so I'm just.
Oh, to, no. Yes, it is today. I'm sorry, today at one thirty, um. Not used to having court on Friday. Uh, so yes, it is today, I'm sorry, at one thirty. Um, I've got it covered, if you want to show up to it, doesn't matter, it's just a matter, I want him, I want our insurance agent to go out and look and see what's there and what's not there.
Awesome.
And, and then make sure that his list of covered, covered, um. Property is the same as what we actually have out there. I don't want to be paying more than what we're, oh, the things we don't have. Um. Another item I wanted to mention was, you know, we recently posted, um, for an equipment operator. Uh, for the road department. And social media, I'm not gonna get into a back and forth with people on social media, but there were comments on social, on the social media from. Some local residents and actually even one individual that appears looked like he was from Arkansas. And I'm like, you know, again, what do you, you've got nothing better to do than troll. Harney County's Facebook, social media, it made a comment about the wages we pay. Um, so the comments were on that about the, the, the wages that we can afford to pay. Um, I want to reiterate to the public that, that we pay what we can afford to pay. It, it's not a matter of holding back or being, or being stingy with our money, it's what the ability we have to pay. And my door is always open for anybody to come in and sit down and look at the budget with me. And show what we're paying and what that, what the. The, uh. The future looks like, um. These, these equipment operators, if you wanted to equate them to the, to the State Department or the State ODOT and what they pay their equipment operators. Um, we can't compete with that. And if we did, we would be dipping into our road department reserves. At a rate that would deplete those reserves. In five, five years, eight years.
The state can't compete that.
Yeah, the state, obviously the state can't either because their budget, so. So I just want to reiterate, you know, and it, it's across the board, it's not just our road department, it's, it's all of our departments. Um, there are positions that I wish we had the funds to pay, to pay more. Um, we do have this class and comp thing that is starting, I think we're getting close to an end on it. They've done the classification portion on it and we went through and reviewed the, the, the changes that, that they recommended or that they identified. Um, as in some positions might be a grade five and they're recommended to go to a grade six. Or that they're identified to go to a grade six, or positions that are grade eight should come down to a grade six, whatever, just as examples. So we went through and reviewed all of that, uh, we're in the final phases, in some cases, we had to go back through and look at the job descriptions because of. And, and a couple of situations, they were pretty drastic changes. So we had to go in and look at the job descriptions again and make sure that the job, job descriptions were representative of what the position really. Really was or is. And, um, so kind of hashing that out, but I think it's coming down. Hopefully we'll be done with it by the end of the year, that would be my estimate, I hope. But, but, so I, I, I just wanted to speak to those comments. On social media about. About, you know, what we pay our, our people. Yeah, I, you know, once upon a time. Harney County was a premium employer, everybody wanted to work for the county, the benefit, the, the, the salary was good, the benefits were good. And, and you couldn't get a job with the county, it was until somebody died or retired, whatever, you couldn't get a job with the county. Um. I wish we were in that same boat, we just don't have the revenues. We don't have the revenues in timber receipts, we don't have the revenues in, in property taxes. We have delinquent accounts in property taxes, we have, and I'm sorry, but I'm gonna name it again, but we lose money every year to the URA. To the Urban Renewal Agency. So, uh, with all that combined, um. We're not able to, to compete like we used to be able to.
I don't see.
And it's nothing personal, it's nothing intentional that we're holding money back or anything, it's just a matter of trying to budget and manage the county. The best way possible. So I wanted to speak to that.
Does that?
Um. Economic development, we touched on it briefly, so yesterday or Wednesday, I went to the OTEC. Uh, Annual Economic Development Summit.
Uh, is that the Power Eastern Oregon?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and, um, it was good, was, it was, it was a good session, um. I have to be honest, I think in past couple of years that I'd been, I got a little more out of the past years than I did this year's, but in the. As I sat there and I listened to the, to the speakers and whatnot, I thought about the current positions and what we're doing right now in Harney County as far as. Uh, our economic development, what, what strategy, what direction we want to go with. And, um, I think in our. Our strategy. Our strategy. And maybe as a part of our county strategic plan. Or a separate strategic plan that deals just with economic development, as I was sitting there, uh, kind of brainstorming in my own head, um. The elements that we need to make sure that we're thinking about for our dollars, and this applies today, is tourism. Our service sector. Uh, manufacturing and skilled labor. And, and the public sector, um. Government. You know, and, and how we. How we use our funds and direct our, our efforts in a way to bolster those three. Um. Entities or uh. It's what I'm looking for, those three uh sectors of our economy. Um. Manufacturing, skilled labor, yeah, uh, we're. TBCC is having a, a grand reopening of their, of their. Classrooms over there, which I'm gonna go to, and try to speak with them and see if there's any other. Options that we might be able to collaborate on as far as bringing training here, more training here. In the service sec, in the uh, trade sector. Um, you know, if we're on the, we're on the, the heels or the cusp of. Of housing development and whatnot, we're gonna need trades, we're gonna need plumbers and electricians and, and structural. Contractors, uh, structural labor, uh, framing and whatnot, um.
Regarding that, um, I did, um. See that email from Darcy Patterson, uh, about the grand opening and the way she had worded what. Efforts they're doing and I communicated with her and said, I'm really glad to see. That there is going to be more trades related education for the young adults and just make sure it's not just the young adults, cause some of the older adults. Again, she and I both worked for Oregon Department of Human Services i- in the past. We have people who have had and had and dealt with and are overcoming. Later in life, some of their uh, addiction issues and, you know. But they don't know how to begin to get. Uh, employed, et cetera, but once they're sober and ready. You know, it's nice that if we have some pathways here for some of the trades, cause that's what is often needed and, and wanted.
Well, for any individual, whether you're dealing, whether you're talking about somebody who. Who has had some substance of. Issues, substance abuse issues and their. New start and, you know, wanna continue to build on that start with a, with a new career, whatever. But you have people that, that might be thirty years old and were pursuing a certain path. And it didn't work out for them. So now they're looking at a, at a career change or, or a new career, maybe not a career change, but a new path, whatever. So again, we're not talking about just eighteen, nineteen year olds, we're talking about thirty, forty year olds that, that.
Because. Cause frankly, the young people will probably venture elsewhere for the bigger dollars, but the people who are here. When they're older, usually is where they wanna live. So let's get some of them too.
So then, um, I think also, um, as marketing ourselves. To, to um, recruit any kind of industry in the Harney County. We need to identify what resources do we have here, maybe this has kind of been done already, but. But I, I haven't come across it, but, but what resources, what do we have here in Harney County? I mean, we can say quality of life, we can say, you know, rural. Rural uh, lifestyle, we can say, you know, those kind of things, but, but what other resources do we have here? Water may not be one of those resources, but, but what other resources do we have here? If we can develop, if we can develop more of that uh, skilled labor force. That's a resource that we have here. So do we need to look towards developing resources? To show we have that workforce here to entice somebody to come in? Um. Two things that, that they said in, in the thing that will drive your economy is capital and labor. We have the potential. For attracting some labor through, um, which I didn't know Harney County already was, and with my meeting with Feather. This la, earlier this week, I was. We're already established as a, as a uh, opportunity zone. Um, I've been, had been recently speaking with an individual that said they wanted to, to designate or get Harney County designated as an opportunity zone. But as I find out, we're already are. Um, and they're designated for ten year periods, and what, and it's, it's part of the federal budget, it's already in the, in the national budget. But what it does is it allows people for capital gains, if they have a. Uh, a profit off of selling a business, a property, or whatever that may look like. They can then invest that money in, into opportunity zones for it to be used as capital in financing. Projects, they're not projects, but businesses really, you know, if, if, if there was a startup industry that wanted to come in and needed capital. Startup, then that's an avenue for them to go get that and get those funds. Then the, the person who owns those funds, you know, five years, ten years down the road, they can either get reduced. Taxes on it, or in some instances, in some cases, I've been told they can even take that money out, tax free. So it's outside dollars that are, that are put into a capital fund. That can be used for financing. Local, local into industry. So, so with that being said, the two things that drive your economy are capital and labor. If we're on, potentially have the ability for the capital. And through whatever form that is, through this opportunity zone or through regular commercial lending or whatever. But if we have that capital available, what's the next thing we need? We need the labor. Like many, many communities, we don't have the labor. So again, that might be where we look at partnering with TBCC on a greater, on a greater scale. To help develop that, that labor locally.
Mm-hmm.
Um. I had that more thoughtful on that same topic.
I remember at a previous. Uh, Power Eastern Oregon. Conference that I did attend, um, where they did have the. University and Community College, um, leaders of Eastern Oregon there. And I remember asking. The trades are very, very important, the trades are, are of. A jobs gap in many places, not just, you know, Eastern Oregon, but. Uh, how can? You guys, if you can't do it at the university level, how about the community college level, how can you provide more things? That fit into that? And. At that time, this might have been three years ago, it was, it was a while ago, they said. Um. By statute, we're not allowed to. We have to, we are degree producing institutions and we can't. Just go out doing a bunch of certificate work or, you know, the beginning of, you know. Journeyman and to, I said, yeah, I said, I know some of them, but I said, you know, just, I said. Well, maybe it's, maybe it's time to rethink that statute and to, to work on that, and yes, that's change and change is hard and. And there's, you know, vested interest in not changing, but. We're saying that's a need, that's a need, and uh. And so I don't know if TBCC's offerings that are showing and opening up on that, I, I don't know, but.
Well, I, I think especially with their reopening, which, you know, is a resurgence of their, of their program. Um, now's definitely the time to have those conversations with them. Uh, when I was up in DOTech meeting, they talked highly about the BTI, Baker Technical Institute up there. Sounds like they're real go-getters and they're starting new programs up there in trades and, you know, other equipment operator. Uh, certifications and commercial CDLs and a- all kinds of stuff, so. So if it's a, if it's an element that, that. One of our existing because of statute or whatever, if it's, if it's an element that we're looking for, that can't be provided, then. Maybe we go start, have to start talking to other entities, other trainings, you know, BTI and whoever else. Yeah. So those are just some things I took away from that. From that uh, session on Wednesday, um. It was pretty good showing, um, actually, uh, Brenda Smith from High Desert Partnership was there. She served on one of the, on the panel, they do usually do a panel, um. Session, and um, so it was a couple of staff from High Desert Partnership, uh. Burns Pike Tribal had representation there, so Harney County for, for that day was well represented, I thought. It's nice to see some people from the cities and all that, but. And. I think that's all I have. Sorry, I just kinda. I will forget about it if I don't, if I didn't jump on it, so thank you.
The only thing I, I thought I would mention is that, um. The, this relates to the mental health agreement between the state and the county, that uh, county financial assistance agreement that. We did, you know, that symmetry care in us. And the other counties, uh, AOC was kind of leading the, the technical expertise on this that. That ended up just being the current contract, it was extended through the end of December. And it was. There's been no change as far as symmetry care knows, I went to their board meeting last week and. And I haven't heard any yet either, but the AOC. Uh, Health and Human Services Committee and all their committees are going to be reconvening. You know, for meetings in October, and I'm sure that will be one of the things we discussed. And that was, just to remind you. The contract has gotten very large, convoluted, and they, they want. They took out the language about the counties would provide certain services. Dependent on sufficient funding, they, they wanted to take that proviso out and. There's a suspicion, not, you know, saying this is definitely a bit, OHA is trying to basically. Take away pots of money from counties that don't spend a lot of money on things like aid and assist and, and other services. That just are exploding in the metro counties because they have so many social ills and they don't address them very well. And because the path they're going down just grow, grows that population, it doesn't help. Um, stabilize it and, um. I don't know if that's partly why they're doing it, is just to, to be able to take. Take money here and there and, and just put it where they think it's needed and take it away from the communities that. They don't think need it as much, but um, anyway, I think symmetry care is, is waiting here as are we, and I think that they will. Um, you know, be on the same side of it as us, so I just wanna share that, um, I don't have anything else really.
I spoke with Chris Elliott and Natalie Kenyon from Oregon State University this morning about. Where we are on strategic planning, they presented the results, which they sort of showed those graphs during that session we had. But we outlined next steps and. They also, they went through and compiled the information, they put together a sample value statement. And so the next steps that they would like to do is they need a list of all the departments we have and how many people are in which department. So Holly, you, would you do that? They talked about sending out that survey to the departments and we gave them some feedback on how they could change that same survey they gave us. And so once they have that list. Once they have that list. They are ready to share the results with us and with the people that attended that first session, however, we talked about. We don't want to influence or bias of the rest of the employees who haven't taken it yet. So once they all take it, then we'll share those results with that original group that met. We should probably put some thought into, was there anyone not present that should have been at that first meeting, if so, we need to make sure and get them on the list. Once they do that survey for all the county employees, which they will start putting that together as soon as they get that list. They're, they're gonna put together, um, message from. Us or from me or whoever to send out with it and say, please fill this out, they're gonna put together a message that we can give as an example to department heads. So two or three days after employees receive the survey, they can say, hey, this is important, make sure to take it. Then we'll schedule our next meeting. Then OSU will make some adjustments. Those are the next steps. So it's not a lot of information. One thing I, yeah, that's.
Did you like what you saw so far of what they? General summarized or?
Yeah, I thought they did a good job of capturing. What we talked about, they, they captured what we talked about when we did the group activity with the poster boards. And then they also captured, there was, it might have been part of the survey. But those things were very similar, and we talked about how sometimes group think will highlight different priorities than when you're just individually filling something out. But they broke it down into about eight target areas, things that we need to do to be successful, and they talked about. We need to whittle that down to maybe five, because eight's too many to focus on going forward as goals. And I suggested, let's keep the eight that we have, because three of those, we are already working on addressing like the TLT tax. And economic development, some of the planning that we're doing, so let's leave those on there so that we can say. Yeah, we are actually, we'll check these off and we're already heading in the right direction. So I thought they captured really.
They chicken things off, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, speaking of the TLT, so I've talked with. With the clerk about when we, you know, deadline for getting that filed, so that we can get it on the petition, on the main petition for the May ballot. Um. And I uh, contacted county council who drew those up for us, drew the, the resolutions up, not for.
County council did?
Yeah, um, because I had PDF documents, but I didn't have the Word documents, and they had the Word documents, so I got the Word documents from them. Um. I think we probably need to have that discussion on an agenda item and, and make solidify that we wanna go that direction and, and I'll get those.
I, I remember that, the title, the ballot title and the short. Uh, X number of digits, you know, you can, you know, you can. I was very displeased with that last time our DA does it, and I thought it was, it didn't hit the mark. For someone to see a ballot measure, see, see briefly what it is. And, and help them, um, so I would like us to, you know. As, as time gets closer, should we, you know, I'm not sure if that comes pretty close to when the ballots are done, but. Take a chat with him and, and see, because, um. I read it, I was like, I don't know if we're gonna even understand.
Yeah. Well, I definitely, I know there, there's uh, several other counties that have, have done extensive outreach to their communities, um.
Successfully?
Yes, before this went, went to the ballot itself. So, um, I. You, you know, it's a learning process, um. And I think in order next time, if we wanna see this successfully get through, we really need to reach out to the, to the voters and let them know what this is about. And in a summary, TLT, uh, um. Transient lodging tax, people heard transient and they heard tax. They didn't want transients being relocated from Portland, and they didn't wanna pay any taxes. So, so those two terms need to be extremely identified as to what it really means.
And maybe when we see, um, what you're learning of which counties did, did a good job with it, what their messaging was. See if that, that will apply to us as well, um. Yeah.
I mean. It's, it's too bad that we have to use that.
The hotel motel owners, we, years ago, when we did this. We had a meeting with them because we knew some of them were the most ardent against it, cause they really thought that they would lose business. By adding that tax onto the fee for staying overnight. And some of them will go to their grave thinking that, I mean, you know, it, it was just some of their opinion, but some of them were like. They see both sides or whatever, we were trying to make sure we understood everything. That was holding back their support of it as well as them understanding the need for it and why, why, why we're seeking this. Um, it's, it's a available tool that we need to put in our toolbox, cause we are not where we were years ago and. Every, you know, we, we need to do this, and, but then it, it was really Facebook blowing, blowing on, blowing out, but. Did it in.
So, um. As elected officials. We can go out and promote it. Uh, we can't have our staff, the county do it, but we as elected officials can go out and promote it. And so it's probably gonna lie pretty heavy on three of us to. To get that word out and, and promote it and what it really is and what it really means.
Please draw a, draw a board where everyone can see it driving back and forth.
Uh, um. I have to check on that and, and, cause then you're talking about using public dollars. To advertise it.
To take a stand.
Yeah, so if, if I can't ask you to go do it, then I'm probably not gonna be able to use public funds to, to do it, I, I don't know, I'll have to. I, it, it probably. I, it probably have to form a political action. Through pact or whatever in order for them to spend those funds to advertise it is, is what you probably have to do.
But we could go on the radio.
Yeah.
And talk about it.
Yeah, so, you know. One thing I thought about doing is. My hotel receipts out of my travel over the next couple of months and even in the past that I've done. I'm gonna pull out cities in different places where I've stayed. And look at, because it's not broken down, TLT, this taxes, it's just in one lump sum on your, on your hotel receipt. Um, in some cases, it, it is broken down a little bit, but not completely what all those funds are. But. But I want to compare my hotel receipts for different areas like Baker. I just spent the night in Baker, Salem. Eugene, when we're in Eugene for the, for Naco or for uh AOC. Um, and then go get. Have, have the, the local hotel run me a fictitious receipt of what it would cost for an average room here in Arnie County. And look at the total taxes on that versus the total taxes somewhere else. If I remember right, in the last one, it was, it would have been a six percent.
I wanna go groundhumps because I'm just curious.
Um, I, I think it was six percent is, is what the, that the TLT tax would have been on that last attempt. If you take an average ru- hotel room, about a hundred fifty bucks a night, some less, some more. That's nine dollars. That's an, that's an extra nine dollars in, in lodging tax. But if somebody is gonna travel from. Portland to Boise and they get, at the end of the day in Arnie County, I don't think nine dollars is gonna deter them from. Staying or traveling on to Ontario where they're still gonna pay that lodging, that TLT tax only in another county.
Exactly.
It's not a tax towards citizens. It's a tax that people pass. Is it the occupancy tax, you think?
So here, this is a state, so that's the state tax. In some places I've had where it'll say county, city, state, you know, local. I don't know if that, that might be. It, it's funny how they.
But it, yeah, I just.
And not every county, not every county has TLT.
I know they definitely do.
Okay.
But, and that might be what it is. They might have waived it because there was some misunderstanding with.
And, and people may not realize that both Burns and Hines already have a.
They've had it for years, yeah.
Before you all escape, this is the service contract with the global grant services in Jefferson County. Oh, thank you.
So it's just things to think about when we check, when we start to go to, to educate outreach on, on putting that through.
Anyway, that's, that's where I was strategic planning, so it'll probably be. Later into the fall and winter before we have another meeting. I'm anticipating that the next meeting that we have with OSU Extension, they will probably be via Zoom. But that'll be after we get our survey results.
And how, how many total meetings were anticipated?
We talked like four to five meetings, I think is what we talked about. As far as a fair update, I haven't been able to attend the last two event center. Meetings. We haven't yet had a fair board meeting to go over and post fair. Review. But I felt the fair was very successful. I think that Junior Livestock Show. I haven't seen the numbers yet, but I won't be surprised if it is one of the most profitable we've ever had. There were more people in the stands bidding just because there was more space. And because it wasn't nine hundred degrees. And I heard from a lot of people that the, the flow of livestock worked really well and they identified a lot of spots they need to improve. It seemed like people really enjoyed the carnival. I hate rides. Um, I think it was really successful fair. We have a meeting today. To figure out how we are gonna proceed to, we're starting to button up and plan on buttoning up the event center. But we have a limited amount of money left and so we're gonna talk about what our priorities are. You talked about a contract for that. Would, is it appropriate? Can I, will you share or copy that contract with me?
The.
The event center contract.
Yeah, the original, uh, contract with the, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to take a look at that if I could. Because they've been really good to work with. But as we're prioritizing also, if, if it said in the contract, they were gonna get something done, we need to make sure. But they, they have been great to work with. They worked really hard to get it to the point. It was at for fair and I appreciate that. So I don't really have any.
Would you please find out the status of um the fair manager's ability to submit for whatever the, the big grant? That was like gonna be almost a million dollars that was almost guaranteed if we, if we uh. When we voted to go ahead and give them the last of the ARPA money um last year before you, you know, it was like. Where's that at?
It was supposed to be like the five hundred thousand that we gave. With the potential of tripling it to like three million or something like that.
Well, I know that um if, I mean, I know people like to be very positive and say, oh yeah, we're. Ninety percent sure we're gonna get that. What happened? Have we, to be, I, I know they supposedly have a grant writer helping them, but I mean, did it get submitted? Was it successful? Is there another round? Because that was gonna help let them proceed with additional. Um, building and work on the event center.
I made a note and I will ask today about that.
Yeah, with a little bit of specifics, just like, you know, it's not, we're not looking for blame, fault or anything else. Just where's it at? What happened? What's next? You know?
I did provide to the fair manager, we'll ask. Maybe it was this week. The um, the budget line for that five hundred thousand dollars that she was gonna. Charge against it for something rather than just the project itself or what. I don't know exactly. I didn't see the invoices or anything against it, but. So I don't know. Yeah. If that's not, if that's not feasible anymore, so we're just at the point now of spending it or what?
Now I'm supposed to help with match for, for the big grant.
I'll ask, I'll follow up. I know they, they have gotten several grants this year and I know that there was one that was fairly big because I just saw it. On the balance sheet or what they have left to spend on this project, but I will try to get some clarification on.
That'd be great, yeah.
I suppose the treasurer's out for lunch. I'm, I'll, I'll just, I'll leave it at this, but there was a very sizable donation from a private entity. Um, I would think there would be public information that's written on a check and came to the county, but let me double check before I. Put that part of it out. But there was a donation of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from a private entity.
Oh, nice.
Other stuff, I did attend the Naco Pilt Fly-In that they did. Where we basically got in groups with other county commissioners from around the United States and states that have public lands. And we went and had meetings with different legislators to advocate for payment in lieu of taxes. And also for secure rural school funding. The day before the Naco event started. Several Eastern Oregon commissioners, myself, had some meetings set up with Merkley, Wyden, Benz. And also with Tom Shoals, the chief of the Forest Service. Those meetings went as expected. We did actually meet with the legislators themselves and not just staff and we expressed the concerns that we had. About different issues in our area. One thing that did come out of the meeting with Benz that I think is worth noting is. He was very frustrated at the lack of understanding and media coverage of the big beautiful bill and the things that it accomplished. There was a big focus on Medicaid and some of the worries about that, but there are a hundred or a hundred and fifty other things. And one of the things that he commented on, which I thought was interesting and, and noteworthy, any, because we said, what can we do to help? There's been a lot of talk that SNAP benefits are gonna be cut. I can't remember what that acronym stands for, but basically food assistance.
Nutrition assistance program.
However, what that bill did is said in order to qualify for SNAP, you have to work twenty hours. Did everybody know this except for me? I thought they did a really terrible job of advertising that and it was news to me. The twenty hour stuff on them.
My wife works in, for that agency that, that.
Administers.
Administers that, so I was aware of it, yeah.
Twenty hours of work, twenty hours of school or twenty hours of volunteering. And what. What Representative Ben said is if counties could help compile a list of volunteer agencies. So that if somebody does need SNAP benefits and wants to know where can I volunteer, we can just.
That's good, that's good. Maybe that can help.
The best meeting was with the chief of the Forest Service. One of the things that we wanted to talk about is there has been some scuttlebutt about Blue Mountain Forest Plan Revision and a special interest group. That doesn't feel like it has followed the process and that is not the feeling of the members of the. Blues Intergovernmental Council, which includes county commissioners who feel like their voices have been heard. And the chief of the Forest Service came right out of the gate and said, we need more local control. We need for counties to have a seat at the table and be involved in planning projects, meaning that. We need a county forester to be in there planning these forestry projects and skipping around, but. They're focused a lot on forestry and I brought it around to range management as well because the Forest Service plays a big part in our grazing plan for our county. And he said, the county needs to have a range manager or a forester at the table to help plan those projects and. We need to find a way to funnel resources to them. So he was very cognizant of the fact that local control works better. That our local stakeholders have a better idea of what's going on on the ground. And I guess to. I guess to showcase his credibility or to talk to that, he is from Idaho and he is a forester from Idaho. So I'm very optimistic that it's not just lip service and we have. The Naco Public Land Staff right now reaching out to some counties in Idaho who have already done this. Rather than a good neighbor agreement or stewardship agreement where the county doesn't get any of the timber receipts. There are some counties in Idaho who are actually managing the forests in their county. Still belongs to the foresters, still public land, everyone can enjoy it. But the county is taking an active role in managing it and they are. Getting revenue from those receipts. So Zeke is the public lands guy at Naco. Gregory is the new public land center guy. They reached out to them and they're gonna put together a template, MOU that counties can use with the Forest Service. That will enable us to take more local control over our forests. And also then we can start the conversation of, well, that's a great idea. We don't have any money, so how are you gonna help us? Fund a position or what does that look like? But that was, that was a big.
Is that, is that all ready? Been done through the Forest Service, they're ready to. Or, yeah, when we talk about. I mean, has that already come down and now it's just a matter of the local entities deciding to take advantage of that, that path?
It, it's just happening.
It's just happening.
They have good neighbor agreements, which I'm not an expert on, nor stewardship agreements. I just know that with the stewardship agreements. The county doesn't receive the same share of timber receipts. So even though it leads to better management of their forests, they don't get any money out of it.
And, you know, we have um situations here where some of the logging that is done. Uh, some of the forest projects that are done that travel a lot on uh county roads. Not Forest Service roads, county roads, et cetera, and. Um, the wear and tear and just some of that kind of stuff with those very heavy vehicles, et cetera. You know, I've had people talk to me about that over the years and that, you know. County should be recouping that for our, our road department in some aspect, you know, things like that.
And not to skip ahead, but one of the things that we talked about in Tillamook yesterday. They have a lot of industrial forests that are privately owned. But when they do logging projects on publicly owned lands, which is mostly state lands. It, it has expectations right in there for what they will do with the roads and it's their responsibility to build the roads, to maintain them, to maintain the culvers.
It used to be that way.
Right.
When, i- in years past here in Arnie County, it used to be that way. All the, all the stewardship work and everything that they do now used to be part of the sale. Used to be part of the timber sale that they go out, they, they cut whatever was designated in the sale, whether it was a clear cut, whether it was a selective cut or whatever. But then all the stewardship work of, of clearing the underburden and everything was part of the sale. I, 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 they almost need to go back and pull a plan off the shelf from nineteen seventy-five and put it back into use again.
Yeah, no, very, very good.
But anyway, so that, that is exciting news. In terms of the actual field meetings that we had. One of the things that the Naco staff advised us on, and in retrospect, I wish we wouldn't have focused so much on SRS. I know that it's important to us. But to me, I would rather receive a fair amount for our public lands. For example, our assessor ran some numbers earlier this year and if. A very conservative figure, if we receive property taxes off all our public lands in Arnie County would be twenty-one million dollars. As opposed to the three million dollars that we get in property taxes now. Our, our total. Our total revenue generated by property taxes would be twenty-one million.
And where we get hurt in the, uh, kinda obviously where we get hurt in the formula. You know, the to calculate.
Is population.
Is our population. We've got all this land and with the few people, it just. You'll, you'll see some small county in Oregon that gets so much and they have hardly any.
And, and it gives the impression really that what they're doing is putting more, more money towards counties with higher population that are buying votes.
Exactly.
Deschamps County gets three times the pill payment we do and has a third as much public land.
Yeah, exactly.
So.
Well, we have less population because there's a lot of public lands in our, in our, our county. It's kind of this catch twenty-two, you know?
We were very vocal with our representatives and senators that there needs to be some reformation of that and the population. Population component of the formula needs to be reevaluated. That was, that was the pill fly-in. Came back for that water commission meeting. We already learned that our community-based water plan, integrated plan was accepted by the state. The presentation of this petition for amendment was done very well and in a very thoughtful way. The one thing I do have to note from that meeting is I feel that the department's presentation. And overview of the RAC five twelve rulemaking process was misleading to the commission. Because it was made to sound like there was a lot of community buy-in. And just because over the course of ten years, we had a lot of community members attend the meetings, I wouldn't describe that as buy-in. And the same was true for the community-based water planning. To say that a hundred and sixty local stakeholders participated over the course of eleven years, while it is true. Doesn't change the fact that on the last consensus meeting, there were twelve people in the room and only one of them wasn't paid to be in there and they were. And luckily, we did have people involved with that throughout the process. I do think that this is a good plan. I think it's a usable tool and it has good information in it, but it, it, it was just luckily. It's because we had outside stakeholders that. Do have Arnie County's best interests in mind and we did have some local stakeholders that participated. We just got lucky. It could have gone a different way, but to represent this as something that had huge community buy-in. And part of the problem was ten years. Nobody's paid to be in that room. People have real jobs and you want to drag this on because of bureaucratic. Baloney for ten years, people are gonna stop coming. And one thing. I brought up to our facilitator because I didn't want her to feel like she was being attacked, but I asked when I started participating in that process. Why in the hell is the RAC five twelve group not looking at the groundwater plan that we put together? Already been adopted by the state. Why are they not using that plan? And she very meekly said, I came to a RAC meeting and I presented it and tried to show it to them and they. The department.
I remember.
Didn't acknowledge her.
Zooming into, and saw, or do that, and saw. Borderline rudeness, you know, as the, as the, as the response.
The, the department summarized all of the public comments they got over the last, however long. Into different themes and they really ride the fence on most of the themes. They'll say something like. Springs. Some people feel like we need more data. Some people feel like they shouldn't be included, but it doesn't make a definitive statement, but it did. Oh, what the heck? Where was I going with that train of thought? About those public comments.
Rudeness, I had said rudeness.
Oh, gosh.
The summarization of them. Generalization.
I don't know. I completely lost my train of thought.
Welcome to the club.
I mean, that, that one's gone.
Get used to it. So um. So um, well, thank you um both of you for the, the stuff you've been involved in and um doing, a lot is, a lot is coming to a head right now on some very long-term things and uh appreciate the updates.
Oh, one other thing, Attila, not much to say about that, that was a worthwhile trip, the networking was definitely.
Oh, did you go to the working lands?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that, I'm glad you did.
I do think we could do something like that here, but honestly, after attending that wetlands collaborative field trip, if we invited people from outside the county, it would have been a very similar thing. And so I think if we wanted to put something together similar to that and invite legislators and other county representatives to see what we do in Harney County. Uh to me, I think you'd, you'd wanna represent the agricultural industry, the refuge could be part of the conversation.
Timber. We don't really have much of one, but, but, but still, it's, it's part of, it's the makeup of our county.
Yeah, but I think we could, I think we could do that. But what I did think was worth commenting on just to give people hope is I did have lengthy conversations with Commissioner Scar, who I think is the president-elect of AOC.
Yeah, she was incoming.
And her priority is going to have to do with financial stability for counties and figuring out how the state can either start ponying up. And I said, what about measure five and measure fifty? And she said, that's something that we have to address because it's stifling our communities. And so the fact that the Association of Oregon Counties is going to focus on how do we make our counties stable? The Clamton County Commissioner said back at the PIL thing, and I asked if it was her hyperbole and he said, no, I'm serious. If something doesn't change, they are insolvent in three years. And there are other counties west of them that are in worse shape.
I, I will say that in the last three budgets that I've prepared, this year's was the toughest, the general fund.
The last.
Cause it's getting tighter and tighter.
Yeah.
I, I know, it's like something's gotta change because otherwise, you know, whatever, every year it's gonna be, what are we gonna cut? And you know, that's tough.
On that note, the last thing I had on my list, which is an awkward conversation, but we can't talk about these things one-on-one or outside of this. But we have had conversations about the potential for an administrator and it always comes back to cost. I feel strongly, I'd like to see a county administrator in some capacity, it's not a reflection of the administrative work that has been done, but for continuity across terms, to have someone that focuses internally and what I would envision with that is there would be a grant component to that, maybe even in the job description that they procure at least their salary worth of grants annually. And their evaluation would be based on that. I, I think there's a lot of different ways we could do it to justify it financially and to not have it be a burden on our bottom line. The problem is if we do that, that changes the nature of the judge position. And it, it's not for me to say, or even, I mean, it's two against one. But you were elected with a job description and a compensation package. And so I just wanted to open the conversation, maybe we can put it on the agenda at the next meeting, I have a proposal in mind, but I would be especially interested in your perspective on if we were to administrate, if we were to incorporate some administrative duties in someone. First of all, what does the job search look like? Can we add job duties to someone in-house and change the nature of their job? What does it look like financially? I think that there is some strength in having a judge rather than going to a board of commissioners. We don't have legislative ability to do that right now. To some people that don't know any better, that judge term, you call Washington, that means something to them. I think it's good that we have an elected leader because a lot of these boards of commissions, they, they rotate the chair position. But in our case, we had one person, people elected, that's gonna be the leader of the commission. I wouldn't, I wouldn't change any of that, but if we were to promote someone to have more administrative duties and grant right or whatever, how would that change the nature of your job? And how would that change compensation? You don't have to answer now, but that's not.
Well, I've thought, I've thought about it.
I would encourage you, we had a work session on this topic before you, I don't know if it was a couple of years ago, whatever, but it's one of the ones that's on video, if you, if I believe.
Have taken office?
Yeah, I think so. And well, I don't know, I and anyway, it's, there's one in on our YouTube channel somewhere, I don't. And it, we had lots of discussion, which, so listen to it if you can find it, maybe Holly can help us find, well, you know, find out which one it is, but um it was a lengthy one and, and we all should listen to it again, or in my case, again.
The, the work session was specifically on?
Yes.
No, but it was specifically on the administrator or?
No, it was on cha- the possible change in the form of government.
Okay.
To, which included a, an administrative discussion. Because there is some interest in that. And I remember I called about seven or eight counties and talked to them about there were a, a smaller number of counties who had made the change or, you know, had, used to be a county court a long time ago or, or more recent. Or, you know, and just checked with, I checked with all the ones that are still county courts, you know, but then I checked with some other ones. And um there's something to consider that how, when a non-elected person has a position that the electeds rely on for them to always tell us what's what and, and should they be power hungry? Should they be in the pocket of a certain, you know, click, whatever? There have been some counties who've said, I wish we could go back because it's a mess. At least when you're an elected official, the people could hold you accountable for the decisions. And all that, and of course, a lot of that has to do with personalities and approach also. And, and one thing to consider is if that would be a position that, an administrator position that would could be expected to be relatively stable if it's gonna have a lot of turnover, because there is a lot to it. A lot, I mean, once you learn it, okay, but uh if, you know, if it turns over a lot, it would be a mess.
Yeah. So in the budget, I'm not afraid to say it, whatever, my salary is about ninety-five, ninety-six thousand a year. Yours are about fifty-two, I believe, for the commissioners. I, I in a, would, I, I've thought about this. So I in, in making my part of it or my sacrifice, but it's, but this is me now, it doesn't reflect the next person that's in this seat. If I say, if I say, yeah, I would, I would take a thirty thousand dollar a year pay cut in order to help fund the administrator. I'm, then I just throw that number out there, well, there's twenty-five thousand or whatever. Um, and, and then, you know, I wouldn't be opposed to that. That, that, I'm not, you know, the dollar amount doesn't, doesn't hang me up. The next person though that comes into this seat or the next person that runs for this seat, are they gonna run or, or whatever at sixty thousand dollars a year? You know, I mean.
But that would, but the duties would change, right?
Yeah, absolutely, so, so if, if the, this chair, if this position's duties are less than what they are now, then the pay should be less. That's, that's the whole thing of what we're doing in our classic comp study.
If the judge position at that point became your, a um what do you call it, probate judge? And you were more or less the chair of the county court and you're basically a commissioner. But you're no longer all these administrative things that administrator reports to the county court on any major thing they're thinking about doing or that they're about to do so that we can say timeout, you know, just in case.
So for the discussion, this chair, the judge, right off the bat, the obvious things, the title, the term, six-year term versus a four-year term. Those, those are the obvious things. Behind it, you talked about having, I believe, no matter what you do, if we were to go to a board of commissioners, that the chair needs to be a full-time position. And I know there are other counties that rotate the chair, I don't like that model either. Because your consistency wise is gonna get changed up every year, somebody's gonna have a different agenda and it's gonna get changed up every year. I don't know if there's a way to lock in that the position, position number one is the chair and the chair is a full-time position and it doesn't rotate, I don't know if there's a way to legally do that so that, so that it's permanent that way. But the way it is right now with the judge, it's permanent. So there is that aspect to look at on the pros and cons of, of either keeping county court, county judge or board of commissioners and a, a commission chair. The way it is right now without changing anything, it can't be changed without, without legislative change and a, and a voice of the people is the only way it can be changed. So, so there is that to think about, th- this, this, this form, this, this form of government that we have right now in Harney County is locked in until some major changes would, were to be made to go to a board of commissioners. The probate portion of it has to be relinquished to circuit court is another element of it. And that's part of what's guys locked up in, in legislature in a statute is that by statute, that authority is vested in the county judge. And it has, and it can't be, it can't be relinquished without some form of legislative change.
And the last time I asked Representative Owens about legislative change for those counties of which Harney's one that have a county judge. Um he said he wasn't gonna touch it.
I.
But maybe he's changes. He tried to, he tried to do something, Gillum County had quite a uh top uh.
During the short session last year.
Uh from their own local politics, et cetera, and, and the way they are board of commissioners or were they a county, anyway, um county court, uh anyway, it, it kind of blew up. But that doesn't mean you should never consider. You know?
Well, I think it's, I think.
Counties who want to, it, it, I'd like the wording to be changed that um if, if the count, counties by vote of the people, you know, wanna change.
There's no remedy in the statute right now, it needs a remedy in it.
Yes.
After a lot of, after a lot of thought about this, I have you know, in my opinion, to have a board of commissioners where the chair rotates has no consistency. To expect a board of three people to vote one of them chair is ridiculous. I like the idea of the chair being picked by the people. And so in that, with that being said, I wouldn't, I wouldn't suppose or propose to change our system of government at all. I, I think I would leave it as the judge. I also think a linchpin in this is I think it's realistic to think that if if administrative duties included the procurement and administration of grant funding in, with whatever capacity, maybe they're writing the grants, maybe they're working with the firm that does. I think they could pay for their own position, I think that's realistic. And so that means to be financially responsible, that doesn't have to change the nature of a judge position, but if we were gonna make that decision after your term, we could do whatever we wanted to do. If we're gonna do it right now and take advantage of the possible benefits this could bring to our organization, then it's really up to you and has to have buy-in. And you have spoke before about you think it's important to have at least a full-time commissioner. And which the judge, you know, would be able to do more commissioner duties, which right now you have administrative duties. I don't think it's a bad idea having one in our house all the time.
I would love to be able to focus more on economic development as we, you know, to, to be able to, to reach out and work on those projects specifically to our community.
There's plenty of work for three, oh, you know, three commissioners. There's plenty of work for the majority of your position to do that should anything change. I mean, there, there's tons of work.
I think it is advantageous for our county as long as we can to have part-time commissioners that can still do other things and be part of the community.
I do too, because, yes, I mean, I understand. I've heard the rationale about, you know, it's full-time work, it's full-time, but there's a whole bunch of good people that would not be able to run for office if it was full-time, if it's still got that flexibility of part-time. They can usually balance depending on how motivated they are and how hardworking they're gonna be in it. You know, it might almost be a full-time, but they could still do their side.
I mean, there's, there's two ends of this spectrum. In, in, in past commissioners, there have been those commissioners that show up twice a month for county court and they vote and that's it. And then there is the other end of the spectrum, that, that county commissioners that, that show up twice a month and spend multiple hours on projects, i.e. what both of you have done, Commissioner Shellman. Um so, so there's, but there's nothing statutorily that says that individual
In, in fact.
Do anything more than.
There was no job description at all, even if it's just a county internal thing for a county commissioner back some years ago and um the sitting judge at that time wrote one and it was so uh, it, it was just not even accurate at all. And so I went ahead and wrote up both what the statute says commissioners do. And then there's that catch-all, areas of county concern. And that's the big, other duties as assigned, areas of county concern. That is where we put our work. There's a lot of areas of county concern and we get involved, all of us, but you know, the commissioners can really focus on those things to provide leadership and engagement and, you know, networking and all that that can help bring things together.
I, I think in, in many ways, the, the ball would be in your court. And I think you could say, all right, if we're gonna change that, then maybe the judge becomes three-quarter time and changes compensation, but I also think that you can easily justify why it needs to be a full-time position both now and in the future.
I, I think he needs to stay full-time position, you need to have one full-time position on the, on, or.
The con, for continuity as well as other things.
I think that you could, you could justify indocment without these other responsibilities of being the budget officer, handling HR stuff, the internal things. These are all the things which is still more than a full-time position, I think we could. And i- if that's a conversation we're willing to have, I think we could. I'd like to see it on the agenda, I'd like to get plenty of public comment about it. I, I mean, I have some thoughts I'd write down as a proposal and other people could as well, but I think that we could change. Then the other question is, do we do a three-month search or an administrator? Do we change the job duties of our executive assistant to add administrative duties and grant facilitation? I.
And I have thought of that as well, I have thought about instead of having a specific administrator, do we utilize what we have available, which is the executive assistant and we broaden the scope of that position? And, but it is gonna require still bringing on another person, uh, an, an, uh administrative assistant or an administrative position uh that would do you know, some of the stuff that the executive assistant does that gets shifted down. But as we've talked about, we need backup for payroll, we need backup for the treasurer, we need backup for accounts payable. That administrative position could still serve as backup and, and, you know, for those positions, if something happens and you have an immediate vacancy, that position provides the continuity. But it could also pick up some of the stuff that's shifted down from the executive assistant because the executive assistant's role has been broadened. And, and we do it internally pretty much with what we have. Uh until we get to that point, maybe where we can actually hire a full-time administrator.
I said it was gonna be awkward because she's sitting right there and we're talking about her, is that something? Is, is that something we're willing to do is put that on the agenda for the next meeting? Everybody, put together thoughts on this that we can put in the packet.
Do we wanna do a work session?
I think, because it, and I, and I don't know if Holly can search old.
Will we help you, man?
Oh, I hope it's not for that explorer, it's got a flat tire.
Um hopefully, maybe Holly can do a scan of the different work sessions and what, what the topic was. I wish on, um, I wish the work sessions could have the title, you know, right there in, in, in TownCloud or whatever so that, but it it worth us all looking into it before a work session? And then, then have a work session because it, yeah.
I try and do when we do, when I upload the YouTube videos, I put work session, R E. And then what was the work, what was the topic of the work session?
Oh, on the YouTube?
On the YouTube.
Okay, well, maybe.
Are searchable, but I don't know if they did that.
Oh, for that, yeah, because they only go back a certain amount and I, I, you would recall if you were here for it, so maybe it was, maybe it was before.
Thank you.
You.
Was that around the timeframe that, that uh as I know the commissioners and several other elected officials' salaries took a pretty good bow, was that around that timeframe?
No, I don't think it had anything to do, I don't think it had anything to do with, with any pay changes, I think it was just the fact that. I don't think it had anything to do with, with any pay changes, I think it was just the fact that this is an ongoing topic that. Some people in the community would like to be considered and like to hear more about and all that.
I'm not leaning one direction or the other, I'm looking at it in practical terms. There were people that did contact me during my, my campaign that wanted to see us. Change and modernize our form of government, whether, whether modernization is really the, the right word or not, you know? So, so it's always been on my, on my calendar, so to speak. To address the topic as to whether or not we stay as a county court or we transition to a board of commissioners. Um, I think, I think that, I think that there's room there for count, for public input. What do you want to see out of your pub, out of your governing body?
One thing that has always really bothered me was the fact that the county judge was the budget officer. That budget officer prepares the budget. And obviously, if you're involved in administration, then you're going to be in a better position to prepare the budget. However, we three approve the budget. And if you were the key author of the budget, you worked your butt off, you know, for six months. You're vested in that budget and there'd just be more objectivity. By none of us, by we all three received the budget and we're very involved, we understand it. We, we, you know, ask the right questions and after you're in, in office for a while, you, you kind of know what the budget is, but it just. I just thought, I know why they do it that way, by county, you know, the county clerk does it way, I understand why, but it's not really right.
Well, accountability, if, if we have a stinker in your position, there. That is causing problems administratively, there's nothing the rest of the governing body can do because you're part of the governing body. And I think that separation.
That person could, could withhold certain knowledge of. Why they built the budget a certain way and we would never know, the, the other two would never know. If an administrator is building it, we're all going to ask all the questions and, you know, they can't really hold back. Nobody should hold back, but still.
What do you want to do for a, a work session, what's your schedules look like? I actually was thinking the other day and I think I may have proposed this once upon a time. Um, and I think of the decision at the time was to just do them as needed. But I'll tell you, communication is tough for us and this is the only chance we get, this or a work session. Um, is, is anybody else inclined or is, I mean, I'm here all the time, so it doesn't matter to me. But to have a standing work session every week, every other week, opposite of county court.
I would like to do that, but I don't think we can do it quite yet, I think maybe when some of these things fall off the table, like the division five twelve and stuff. There might be more opportunity, am I wrong? There are just so many things, I mean, I. I don't know, you can try and if it falls apart, then we don't have it.
I mean, we have a, I, I don't know. Two-hour work session on, on non-county court weeks.
Even what if you, what if once a month on one of the county court meetings, let's just say the second county court meeting of the month. We're going to start them earlier, we're going to break at noon. So we just figure that after one or after we conclude our business, when we come back from lunch. We're going to have a standing two-hour work session and we decide prior to that, we don't need it, that's fine. But if something comes up like this or the roads issue or economic development, then we've already.
I like that, I like that idea and, and we can. And again, the reason the general deliberations are, go on so long is because we're trying to cross-inform one another and. Talk about the stuff we need to talk about. But, but, but if you want to run the, the morning part of the county court meeting, really business-like, business-like. And then at one, when we come back, general deliberations for, you know, twenty minutes or whatever. And then whatever the topic, the work session topic of the day is. Something like that, I mean, it can be kind of loose that way, but.
I'm open to that.
I'm open to that as well, but in the meantime, do we want to wait till our next county court session to do this? Or we want to have a, a work session on this topic of?
I want to wait, because I got so much going on.
I mean, it's nothing that's going to make or break us overnight to have this conversation now or.
An ongoing, but this could be the big, the big first meeting, you know, to really. And if, if there's any way you can find out, should the people want us to do this? What is the whole process for the ORS, for the, um, for putting it on a ballot, for, you know, other things?
I've done most of that research. Yeah, I've done most of that research, that, that what it would take for us to transition from a county court to a board of commissioners.
And that's not what I'm advocating for at all, I, I kind of don't think we should.
But I think you need to, you need to understand the full process of how we would do that if we did. And, because it goes into part of, I think, the decision-making.
But, but to just change what the county judge currently does related to administration. Which is probably not in statute, but better check, um.
It's not.
It's not, and in fact, I think budget officer, we're probably semi-end, almost in violation of having one of the. Seated governing body be the budget officer.
No, we're good.
Okay, um, I mean, you can, you can have someone who doesn't even live in the county be the budget officer. You don't, it does, you know, I mean, it, it can be contracted out or, or, um, delegated in many ways. But, um, yeah, alright, well, let's look at dates then.
So, so are we going to schedule a work session then, or are we going to look at incorporating it into our?
We could do it on the first if you want, I, I don't have anything in the afternoon and. How about, is that when you want to do it?
I don't have anything in the afternoon of the first.
That would be a good one for judge, for you to, in, I've heard some of it before, but inform us of, of what. What the judge's position is, you know, formally. If, 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 and even if it's just one sentence in the ORS, you know, whatever. And, um, if none of us have administration as part of our job descriptions. And any of our local job descriptions can be changed, but as far as, you know, external, um. I mean. I don't know about finding grants to fund. Fund position, but.
But it's not a matter of finding grants to fund that position. It's a matter of, and I know where you're going, it's a matter of finding grants for other, other departments. That then eases up money within the general fund to be able to fund the administrator. I got, you know, where exactly what you were, your intent was there. So it's not a matter of going out and finding a grant to fund the administrator.
Yeah, if they get a two million dollar grant for the road department, well, then that just freed up two million dollars.
Because our fund is, is pretty dedicated, but if you, if you come up with a grant, like, like just say. We came up with a, a two million dollar grant for our jail, for our jail project. The administrative costs that come off of that, the, 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 the de minimis is fifteen percent now. So fifteen percent of two million dollars goes into the general fund as administrative funds. That's a big chunk of change that, that, that eases up money for other purposes.
Good, lots to think about.
And I don't like relying on grants. Which it wouldn't be funding that position, but it would be tied to, especially if we set an expectation of the job is that you procure at least that much. However, I do think it's realistic, at least for the foreseeable future, that. A person with the right skillset could absolutely, I mean, if we're talking about the whole compensation package with everything included. Hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of grants, I don't think is unreasonable a year.
I think, um, to be realistic and just looking at some of the stuff that, that I did research on salaries for administrators. Um, your base salary is probably going to be around one-twenty. With benefits, then you're looking at probably one sixty, one fifty in total, total package.
I think, and I thought of that, but I think we need to make it fit our situation. And so it might not be that big, and that's why I said total compensation, because when you figure workers' comp and benefits and everything else. Yeah, it might not, the salary might not be a hundred and twenty a year for what we originally envisioned. Eighty thousand or something significantly more than what we are paying. And not to switch subjects, but I remembered in the comments that were summarized by OWRD. They said that there were comments about coordination with local governments. But they didn't specifically say, they did not coordinate with us, and in fact. The reason the public comment period was extended was because the tribe reached out to them and said, you did not coordinate with us. And you're statutorily required to. And so they pushed back the comment period to coordinate with the tribe and they still have never coordinated with us. We had one meeting down in the basement to set our expectations and then they never followed up on that, so it just. Need a hearing or there, they didn't coordinate with us.
Alrighty, very, very good discussion, I, I, I like it. We don't get, obviously because of statute and ethics and everything, we, we can't have these conversations. So, I appreciate it. I think we develop ways that we can, and what we've talked about, so that we can have these discussions more often.
And I suggest that maybe the afternoon sessions, uh, reconvene on those county court days when we have them, um. At one fifteen, just, just in case, it's a day where I've got, you know, just give you a couple of minutes to.
We probably can't ride without district two meeting together.
Well, here, here's how we did, did stuff when Pete and Mark and I were on the court. Is if you really, really make it a point not to talk county stuff. You can ride with each other and there's, that's how you get to know each other, you're not talking about county stuff. And, um, you are, you are allowed to and, and even the county court, um. Meetings out in the rural areas, I sometimes rode with Mark. Uh, you know, or Pete and we, we didn't talk business, we just talked like two people, you know, talking in general. And so, I mean, it's on you to do it, it's on you to be careful. But, um, that's how you can do it and be unethical, you, you know, it's only if you decide to. Collude and plot and make a bunch of decisions and leave the other guy out or leave the public out, you know, you're not going to do that.
Alright, we have. Straight quite a bit here, I mean, not straight, I mean, it's all very good conversation, that's what I'm saying, I, I, I appreciate it. But unless there's anything else extremely pressing that we need to discuss.
No, I'm hungry, let's go.
Then I shall adjourn today's session of county court.
Big conversations.